Turn on here and we get ready to proceed with our meeting. Always want to welcome each and every one of you to our meeting tonight. I try to set this agenda in, in light of who I think needs to go to bed the earliest in a given night. So some of you all say you'd like to go bed about eight o'clock, so I try to see if I can put you on the agenda early on. And for those late night owls, I'll put you on about 10 o'clock. So want to welcome all of you all here. If you have a cellphone, I'd ask you to maybe at least put it on silence or vibrate, or if you need to use it, please just step out. We have a pretty lengthy agenda tonight, so we'll try to work through it as best and quickly as we can. We have a couple council members look like are absent this evening, so we call a roll call, we'll take that into account. But as always, we always like to stand and say pledge of allegiance to our flag for the military who are fighting throughout the world. We always want to remember them and those who have served. If you heard this week, after, since 2001, the war in Afghanistan against the Taliban has come to an end. Isn't that unbelievable that that war is concluded after 19 years of fighting with the Taliban? They signed a peace treaty just this past weekend, and if you recall what took place back in those days of the Taliban and probably how many soldiers we've lost since then, that that is a huge ending of a conflict. So I think we remember those who gave their life and for that cause. So with that being said, why don't we stand and say the pledge of allegiance to our flag?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know if any of you all ever have seen Gene Crady do his pledge to this flag, but it's something to see and how he talks about the red, white, and the blue in this flag. How many of you all have seen him do that before?
I have.
It's very fascinating in what he can remember and how he talks about this flag. And I've asked Gene to come to a future meeting to do that for us, and he said he'd be glad to. With that being said, I'd like for Madam Stephanie Cooper to call the roll. Madam Clerk.
Ray.
Here.
Mary. Leslie.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Elsie.
Here.
Andrea.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Debbie.
Okay, I think we have six members present. That's a quorum. So with that being said, I'll call this meeting to order. The council, you have an agenda for you. Any questions with the agenda? Any corrections or do you like to add to it? Any deletions or anything you'd like to add to the agenda for tonight? If nothing, I'll entertain a motion that the agenda be approved as presented.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Joe Davenport, second by Leslie Wright. Any discussion on the motion? If not, owes in favor the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, you also have before you your February 3rd minutes. We've had these minutes for a number of days here, so if it's okay with the council, I'll just add that we delete the reading of those minutes, but if you do need a chance to look at them over, to maybe ask any questions about them, you're welcome to. If not, when you are ready, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Leslie Wright, second by Joe Davenport for the approval of the minutes. Owe's in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Once again, you have your financial reports before you. If you would like to look at any portion of the finances, if you look at first at the bank accounts and all of our different accounts within the city, so you fully can understand those or ask any questions in regards to our account balances at any given institution or any special accounts that we have here, you're welcome to do so at this time. In conjunction with that, if you look at your account balances, I'd also ask you to look at your payables. We have like three pages of payables tonight, and would anyone have any questions or concerns or issues with any of the payables that have been made thus far in this balance sheet tonight?
I just had a question. In our February meeting, we passed resolution two to open a bank account at Farmers Bank for the tourism tax, and I'm not seeing it on the list, is it just not there?
It's not there.
Okay.
Sorry about that. It will be on there next month.
That is a valid question, Andrea. I will say, my recollection, what has been deposited and forwarded to the Tourism Commission from Stephanie, our city clerk, is somewhere in the neighborhood of about $25,000. And I don't know exactly what the account balance is tonight, but I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $25,000. Okay, you also, you have your bills in front of you. Are there anyone wishing to ask a question about the payables? Then you also have your statement of revenue and expenditures through February 29th of 2020. That's a tracking of what we try to do to see perhaps where we are at any given time of the month or the year. And we will be watching those very closely next month or two as we approach our budget time, and we will try to do our best to estimate what yet is to come in and what yet is to be spent. So we will try to have a close approximation of how much money we will spend for the year and also how much revenue will be taken in in order to get ready for our next 2020-21 budget. So if anyone has any questions about that financial piece, you're welcome to ask that. If not, I'll entertain a motion that these three documents be approved as presented.
Motion to approve financials.
Motion made by Joe Davenport, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Leslie Wright. Owe's in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, as always, we're moving right along. We have a chance for anyone to come tonight to speak during public comment to the city council. Is anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the council at this point in time? You're welcome to come and talk about any matter that concerns you. If there's an issue with you within our city or out of our city, you're always welcome to come up here and speak for at least four minutes. And if this council wants to extend your time, they're welcome to do so if they need to listen to you more. Anyone here tonight for public comment? Okay, no one's coming for that, moving right along. We have Ms. Sandy Fokes here tonight, she's director of our Main Street Downtown, so she's here to speak to the council about all her many activities.
And there are a bunch, let me tell you. So first and foremost, our monthly Main Street Merchant Meeting will be tomorrow morning. It's at 8:00 a.m. at City Place, so we're looking forward to that. We have a good turnout, we got a lot going on, so we'll try to keep it moving quickly. The main thing we're working on right now is the World War II Home Front Celebration. That's happening over Memorial Day week, that's a week-long, basically week-long activities with things happening Wednesday through Saturday. We'll start with a restaurant crawl, a dine-hop if you will, with the restaurants on Main Street and in La Grange on Wednesday night. Thursday night, we have an opening at Gallery 104. On Friday night, we have a community picnic, and Saturday, of course, is the big event with the unveiling of the sculpture at the History Center. So a lot of things going on in celebration of that. We'll be decorating, of course, very Americana-themed, very appropriate theme throughout town. On that, we're looking at banners and bunting and flowers and flags and special displays and interactive things happening up and down Main Street and throughout town with bands, with swing music, with World War II movies playing, with honoring Gold Star families and displays in each one of the participating shops along Main Street as well. So that's going to be a great big event, lots of moving pieces with that. Right now, tickets just went on sale too for our Blue Hydrangea Tea, that's on April 26th from 1 to 5. I am thrilled to say we have Baptiste East back on board as our major sponsor for that. We also have six new participants already this year, and we will be having a pop-up with Sisters Tea Parlour on Main Street that day, serving all their specialty teas and goodies. So we're looking forward to that as well. Some of the other projects we're working on for 2020, rolling out our new Main Street website, our event and program sponsorships, a lot of things included in that, business incentive programs, our Friends of Main Street program. And as of, as of today, we have $8,500 worth in new sponsorships for our events for this year, so we're thrilled with that. That's going to go a long way to really supporting these events and growing them, making them bigger and better for us. On the recruitment front, I'm thrilled to announce that Jody Curry has been added to our Board of Directors, so she'll be joining us as of Saturday, actually when I talk to her. So that's a great addition to our Board of Directors for Main Street. Let's see, we're working on four grant opportunities and actively pursuing five new people to recruit them to come to Main Street to open stores. As far as events, we've got 16 events in the works right now, some of those being Blue Hydrangea, of course, the Farmers Market, Trackside Market, Small Business Saturday, Trackside Tunes, Arts Fest, which will be the new event in June on the 4th and the 5th. And we've already got two sponsors solidified for that, two major sponsors, four food vendors, and I believe it's 10 to 12 vendors already paid and asking for spots right on Main Street for that show. So we're looking forward to that, should be a big draw for us. We'll also, of course, be doing Halloween Mania, Light Up La Grange, Iron Man Festival, and then our ghost tours and our ghost stories, so we're looking to expand those this year as well. From a social media perspective, our page reach in February was 77,400 people who heard about La Grange, took the time to click and really look at what we're doing and look at how we're growing and the things that are happening in our little town. We are up 77 Facebook followers to 6,500, and our Instagram followers and our Twitter followers have grown as well by about 18 to 25 on each one of those. That's the long and the short of it, because my bedtime's what time, 8 o'clock? So I don't want to hold you up. Questions or anything I can do for you all?
Anyone have a question or comment for Sandy? The, you're talking about the unveiling of a sculpture, could you elaborate on that a little bit more? What's that about?
That is actually-
And this is all in cooperation with the History Center doing this, correct?
With the History Center, exactly. And it's all tied into the 75th Celebration of World War II. This is actually a sculpture that is done, it is a bron-, I'm going to say bronze, Nancy would kill me if I'm wrong on that, a bronze sculpture that they have had cast for the Road Warriors Project. So it's actually a cast of the motorcycle that was used to promote that. They'll have speakers that day from Gold Star families, local families, and veterans from World War II, and unveil that. I believe it's at 1:00 on that Saturday that they'll unveil the sculpture.
Social media, talking about Main Street, Kentucky, La Grange. What's your, how would you like to respond to anything about what's being said about our Main Street ideas, our vacancies? What, what do you need to be saying to the general public on TV that being said somewhat otherwise and how we're dealing with things like that?
Well, it's an, always an ongoing process. I think that, and we've talked about this many times, I think that we are on a tipping point right now. There are so many big, exciting things going on, there will always be attrition. It's very interesting to me that people tend to, and I shouldn't say all, but some people tend to really go to the negative side of things rather than see the positive side of things. As I look at our growth, we had a, a business more than double in size in the last three months and moved to a new space. We had, gosh, since I've been here, since July, we've had five new businesses, we've had one expand. Our revenue reported this year was off the charts, so it's interesting to me, it's, the glass half-full or half-empty. I look at what we're doing and the improvements we're making have to be done. It's tough, but we buckle down and we get it done. That's how we grow. If we continue to do nothing, there will be no growth. So I look at, and I think as you look at the sponsorships and the changes that we're doing and, and that influx of new people and new ideas, it's always going to be tough, but we buckle down and we get it done. I think that the improvement in the tracks is a great plus. It looks so much better, it's safer, we don't have to worry. The, the buildings and the renovations and the things that I see happening in the buildings are always a positive, but it's, it's just one of those growing pains, I think. And, you know, they always say, somebody said to me the other day, "Well, it'll get worse before it gets better." And I thought, well, that, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think that it's a challenge, we buckle down and we get it done. We grow and we learn.
Well, we're also hearing from other towns and cities that are facing the same challenges we are with vacancies, buildings in certain types of disrepair, things like that, and what they're doing as city and city initiatives, coming from the city and our economic development strategies, things like that, that they're actually working in concert with like startup, startup ideas, you know, those different terms are used as far as, I can't think of them right now, but there's just a lot of ideas going out there through Main Street programming that you're a part of that, you know, probably as a city, we probably need to be looking at some of those types of thought processes in terms of how, how you deal with some of these issues facing small-town America, you know? And we, you know, I think we're doing well compared to some cities, and, and so you've just got to keep trying every day of the week to get it done.
Yeah, I think we're starting to look at some of these things, you know, other cities have faced this as well, it's not just us. But I think what's really interesting, and I applaud the council for looking at these as new ways to do business. Business models are changing, we know that. Main Street, it's almost like the swing of the pendulum, I think, you know? Everybody likes to be local, they like to buy local, they want to feel important, they also want it to be quick and delivered to your door. I'm a firm believer that that's how you win. You have to be unique, you have to be different, you have to have a good business plan, and we have to make sure that the people who come in to do business with us, we make it easy to do business with us, and we give them incentives and we help them along the way. That's where so many of these programs, as I said, working on these grants and these, these funding projects, that's where they come from, is looking outside the box, because the whole retail model has changed. It's not, it's not what it was 10 or 15 years ago, so we have to adapt and grow with that. Part of that is business incentives, part of it is making everything pretty, making it clean, making people want to come in, being engaged, being, I say a global force, and I really mean that, to get, you know, how do we leverage what we have with the train people? I mean, there are people, Joe, you know, you talked about this a couple months ago, how many people are watching the train cam? We need to leverage that and get those folks to come in here and spend a couple days, eat in our restaurants, enjoy what we have to offer. It's just stepping up our plan and knowing that we've got to have that balance between people coming in from out of town and residents as well, and striking that balance for our business owners.
WDRB was out here this afternoon, they, evidently seen our agenda on their, on the website, and they were asking questions about our rezoning hearing tonight, and did we expect any huge controversies over that? And I said, I didn't think so. It's something that the city initiated, and we'll talk about it later, but they just wanted to see, they thought it was a pretty unique idea to try to initiate that, so they, they're going to wait later tonight, see the outcome of that, but they were here to talk about it today, so we'll see how it goes later tonight.
Right, and I think everything that I've heard from, from the residents and from folks that would be involved in that is that they love the idea, because again, it's, it's a chance for growth and expansion.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. If no one else has any things for Sandy, she can be excused, but I think you have one comment here.
I just have a quick comment. It's kind of anecdotal considering, you know, there was stuff in the paper, there's been stuff in social media about the impact of the trains on business, on Valentine's Week, and I just want to say, my business is not directly on Main Street, but we're considered the Renaissance District, we're just off of Main Street. We actually had record revenues that week for Valentine's Week, so I think when you poll all of the businesses on Main Street, and maybe not two or three, you would get a wider capsule of what happened that week in terms of business. And I just want to say, for my business sake, it was a good thing and, and we did really well that week, so thank you for your efforts, everyone who brought business out that week, because it was appreciated.
Well, and I will say, I think that the merchants and the people involved really did a great job in watching, especially, you know, we talk about social media, that's where it's at, that's the quickest way to get to people. There was not a day that at least four to five people were not putting out information, and I applaud the, the city, I applaud the police department for getting that information out there and getting accurate information out there so that we could direct people the right places to be and say, walk a block, walk a block or two maybe, park around the corner. And the merchants did a great job in feeding that information, as did, I think, all of our social media outlets, so.
Well, to end this thing, as far as Main Street goes, our downtown surrounding properties, Jim Urban, Sandy, myself, a couple property owners downtown, met last Saturday morning, just trying to figure out how to keep pushing on economic development ideas and had some great dialogues, so hopefully soon we'll push some of those discussions out there. And so we're not sitting every day just hoping something happens, we're trying to deal with the issue, if there are issues, and like you said, there's a lot going on in downtown, and will be more so. So thank you very much, Sandy, appreciate you being here, and you're welcome to be excused.
Thank you.
Okay, next up's a very exciting person, Ms. Donna Sabo. She's chairperson or executive director, chairman, did you thi-
Utilities.
Excuse me?
It said La Grange Utilities.
Okay, I'm sorry, why don't you have a seat and let's go to La Grange Utilities.
I wasn't prepared.
I didn't know if you were part, I didn't think you were part of the utilities, but uh-
I didn't know anything about the utilities.
Maybe someday you will be.
Okay.
So, okay, we have La Grange Utilities report in front of the council, as, as every month, we have that before you. So Ted is here tonight, Ted Chisholm, Roy Horton, Elsie Carter from the appointment to the Utility Commission, so any, any one of you three want to bring attention to the report before the council? If not, we'll accept the report. I always try to get a motion to approve this report, and have you seen it? It's in the record, so does anyone have any questions of either Roy Horton, who's the chair of the Utility Commission, or Ted Chisholm, executive director, or Elsie Carter?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I had to see this in the paper, that they're looking for a new director. How come I had to read this in the paper and being a city council person, nobody informed me of this?
I have no idea. Bill, Mayor, you know?
I'm assuming you're retiring, Ted, or are you taking another job?
December, in our December meeting, I put in my notice of retirement in August of this year, and then we've been working on it, and last month, they approved the new qualifications for a new director, and then I put it in the paper.
Well, you're going to be missed.
And I don't know about that, Bill.
Oh, I think you will be.
A lot of people will throw me out.
But my complaint is that I don't know who, if there was anybody on city council that were informed about this.
Only reason I know to bill because I, I still attend all of La Grange Utility Commission meetings. I hadn't missed, probably in, since former mayor Elsie Carter put me on there in 2010, I probably only missed, probably, I can count on one hand, the amount of meetings I've missed, and I've still attended them the whole time I was mayor, and I still attend them, and that's the only way I, I knew about it, Bill.
All the city council should have been notified somehow.
And you didn't hear from me, because I have been actively trying to change his mind, because I think we're losing a very good person. I don't mind saying that in public, he is, I don't think we can find a better person.
The reason it was never put on the report, Bill, and that, you can blame it on me or whoever you want to, because we was trying to draw up the new qualifications to meet a director, and they was just approved last month in our meeting by our mile commission, and then after that, they asked me to put it in the paper. So I did put it on it, as soon as they approved it, I put it in my report here to the council. But I did announce my intent to retire in December.
Thank you.
Any more questions for anyone? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please reconsider. Okay, who would like to make the motion to approve their report to the council tonight? I'll make a motion. Motion made by Leslie Wright, second by Elsie Carter. Any discussion on the motion? Owe's in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay. Now, Donna Sabo.
Yes, sir.
She's the chairperson of our Tourism Commission. Welcome tonight.
Thank you. Short and sweet tonight, we, some things that tourism, La Grange Tourism is working on, we're putting together quotes, we've asked for bids for a marketing plan, for our website, social media, someone to handle all the marketing aspect of La Grange Tourism. We asked for three different bids, two responded. Both of these companies are in La Grange, which is very important to us. We definitely want to do business with people here in La Grange, and we'll be, at our next meeting, we'll be going over all the details, and hopefully we'll get something going in the very near future for that. Also, got a report today, and all the hotels paid for the month of January, so that was a, a nice thing to see, and thank you for getting that report to us today. I'm excited about it.
So all of them reported and paid for the month of January?
All of them reported for the month of January, yes, sir.
Okay.
So income for the month of January was 6,200, a little over 6,200, so that was, that was really good news. So I think we do have, though, we still had in the month of December, three not pay, and then in October, we had two not pay, so some of them are still behind, but we are receiving the income. Other thing we're working on is a description for our director, hopefully in the near future, so we've worked hard on looking at what we want and what we need for our director, so in the near future, we'll have a list, if anyone applies for the position, we'll have a list of the qualifications that we expect, so. Anyone have any questions?
Donna, when is your next meeting?
March, St. Patrick's Day, March 17. It'll be at 5:00 at the Welcome Center.
You, you've said publicly your three main items that you're all sort of pushing and promoting as for tourism, your three key components of your tourism efforts, what, what were they related to and based around?
Sure. We're looking at three different, we're looking at trains, the kindness capital of Kentucky, and art, which I think is very important for our city. We need some art pieces, and, and we'd love to be a part of that, so that's what we're, that's the direction we're going. We also are earmarking money for facilities and also money for, in the future, we want to bring a convention to town, if we're interested in something like that, then we're, we're going to have funds for that, so those are some of the things we're working on.
Okay, go ahead, Andrea.
Donna, speaking of the art aspect, can you mention about the CSX boxes and what the commission approved in that regard?
Yes, Sandy has all the details, but we did approve for the CSX boxes on Main Street around the courthouse, there's three of them, I believe, but they're-
Two.
Two, okay. They are going to be covered with art, they're going to be, they're, they're really going to look nice, so that tourism did pay the funds to have that done. We hope to have it done here early spring.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, we're working also on a t-shirt campaign- Okay, we're working also on a T-shirt campaign for our city, a T-shirt campaign earmarking us the kindness capital of Kentucky. So, that's something that I'll probably talk to you all about next month.
Cool.
Any questions?
So, somebody's designing a T-shirt based on kindness capital, is that what you're saying?
Correct. So, all right, thank you all, thanks for having me.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, tonight, we have with us Kevin Fisher. I think most of you all, at least the folks who've served on the council, been part of, oh, well, I guess you were here last year, yeah, you were here last year. We've all met Kevin Fisher, you all familiar with Kevin? He's with RFH Consultants. Kevin is our auditor, part of this audit firm, and he's been here in the city for, he hadn't been here this week, but he was here for a week or so, or better, a few weeks ago. And then Stephanie and Heather have had a lot of discussions with Kevin over the months of this year. So, Kevin, welcome to the council tonight, and I know you've got a lot of figures in your book here, and I understand that, but certainly, hopefully, you can present it to the council, so they can have a clear understanding of how the city has operated for this past fiscal year, eighteen, last half of eighteen, and the first six months of nineteen. That's what this is based around, last half of eighteen, the first of nineteen.
Right. Yes, thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. Each of you have in front of you a Greenbound Book, and you have a letter. There is, within the Greenbound Book, there's two reports. There's an audit report, which is the audit of the financial statements, and there is a report on internal control, for the city's internal controls related to their finances. There is, as you can see, just by looking at the thickness of the book, a ton of information. I'm gonna attempt to cover what I think are the most important things, and the things that I think that are noteworthy, but certainly not everything. So, if you guys have any questions, please do not hesitate to ask. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. But what I'm gonna do is start from the front and work to the back, as quickly as I can. So, if you can start, right after the table of contents, is the independent auditor's The first paragraph says, "Report on the financial statements." And if you read that paragraph, it says, "We have audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and aggregate remaining fund information of the city of LaGrange, Kentucky, as of for the year ending June thirty, two thousand and nineteen." Within that statement, I wanted to point out a couple things. What encompasses the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information. The governmental activities, when you hear governmental activities, that is referring to the general fund, the road fund, the foundations and parks fund, the ABC fund, and the bus fund, which are gonna be presented later in this book. Whenever you see the reference business-type activities, that's referring to two things. That's referring to the golf course and the Utilities Commission. The Utilities Commission has a separate audit, but, which, the Utilities Commission has a separate audit, which was completed on September thirtieth of nineteen. However, their numbers are included in this audit report, because the Utilities Commission is a component of the city. The golf course is a component of the city as well, and is included in this audit report as well. So, I just want to draw attention to those things. When it says each major fund, there's only one major fund of the city, that's the general fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information, that's the other funds. That's the road fund, the foundations and parks, ABC and bus fund. The second part of this report that I wanted to talk about is at the very bottom of the first page, where it says, "Opinions." It says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city of LaGrange, Kentucky, as of June thirty, two thousand and nineteen." What that means is, that's a clean audit opinion. That means that, "In our opinion, all the numbers that follow this report, we believe are fairly stated in all material respects." So, we're expressing an opinion on the financial statements. So, when it says what the net income is, or what cash is, or what debt is, what the city's capital assets is, that's what we're saying. We're saying, "In our opinion, all the numbers in these, all the numbers that follow, we believe are fairly stated in all material respects." That's not to be confused with the internal control report that's later in this book, that talks about the city's controls over finances. The rest of the report has other information in it, talks about the auditor's responsibility, the city's responsibility. That verbiage, year over year, hasn't changed much, so I was not gonna cover much more than much else. Directly after the report, on page three, is the management's discussion and analysis. This is technically the city's report, where the city has an opportunity to point out certain things, year over year, you know, what the performance of the city's finances were in this fiscal year versus the prior fiscal year. I'm not gonna cover this report, other than to say that we have read it, and are in agreement that the numbers and the figures in the management and discussion analysis, we believe are accurate, and agree with the audited financial statements that follow it. Okay, so, that is pages three to seven. So, if you will turn to page, I'm sorry, it's pages three to nine, three to ten. If you will turn to page eleven, page eleven is the beginning of the city's financial statements for fiscal year nineteen. So, that is for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen. So, this is the city's finances at this point in time, for fiscal year nineteen. As, I see familiar faces, and as you all, if you've been around, and you've seen these reports, you will know that there's two separate sets of financial statements that the city is required to issue, and that's under governmental accounting standards that requires it. There's a full, this first statement, where it says, "Statement of net position," and the statement of activities, which is on the next page, is a full accrual set, is a set of financial statements on full accrual. What that means is, it's showing your financials as if you were a for-profit entity. It's showing all the city's capital assets. It's depreciating the city's capital assets, and showing depreciation expense. It's showing the city's long-term debt. It's showing the city's net pension liability and net OPEB liability. It's showing the city's finances as if it were a for-profit business. Governmental accounting standards require that these statements be presented in this way. Beginning on page thirteen, there's another set of financial statements that's on an entirely different basis of accounting. On page thirteen and fourteen, there's a set of financial statements reported under the modified accrual basis of accounting. Governmental standards requires that these statements be presented in this fashion. And the difference is, these statements do not present capital assets of the city and depreciate those assets. They do not show long-term debt as a liability. These statements show, every time the city makes a debt payment, it shows it as an expense. It doesn't record the liability when the city takes on debt. If the city buys a police cruiser for fifty thou, or, that's probably too high, for thirty or forty thousand, it's simply an expenditure on these financial statements. It's not an asset. So, there's two separate sets of statements, on separate basis of accounting. And in the footnotes that follow it, it talks about it, what those differences are. So, I wanted to be sure to point that out, because these statements, if you're going between them, they can be very confusing, when some of the numbers aren't matching up. You're thinking, "Well, that doesn't look right." There's a reason, and it's because they're on a different accounting basis. On page eleven, if you could shift back, I just wanted to point out those differences quickly. You'll see the governmental activities heading, and you'll see the business-type activities heading. So, this is showing you, the statement in that position is in effect, it's the city's balance sheet, and it's breaking out separately, as required, the governmental activities of the city, and the business-type activities of the city. So, as I mentioned earlier, everything, the business-type activities column, has the Utility Commission and the golf course lumped together on this page. So, everything down that column is, it doesn't have them broken out separately, it has them lumped together for the golf course and the Utilities Commission. It does break it out later, on a separate schedule, on page fifteen, which I'll cover here in a few minutes. It does break out for you, the Utility Commission and the golf course, so you can see, well, what is the cash for the Utility Commission, what is the cash for the golf course, how did the golf course do, how did the Utility Commission do? Well, on this first page, it's lumping them together. On this first page, on page eleven, governmental activities, this is everything other than the Utility Commission and the golf course. This is the general fund, this is the bus fund, this is the ABC fund, this is the foundation and parks fund. It's putting them all together in one column, to show you the total assets of the city for all of those together. So, a couple highlights on this page. Cash is up, year over year, about six hundred thousand dollars. You'll notice a new line item for the governmental activities that the city didn't have in the prior year, and that's investments. The city took two million dollars out of cash and invested in CDR's program, to earn higher interest, and have their money invested in CDs, that are fully covered by FDIC insurance coverage. So, there's a new two million dollar line item in this current year, that didn't exist in the prior year. The city's capital assets are up two point two million, which is, the biggest part of that increase is during the year the city accepted roads into its system. And governmental accounting standards requires that, when you bring roads into your system, you value them, you record them as an asset, and then you depreciate them over time, and expense them as they wear, because eventually, then, you're gonna have to replace or maintain and repair those roads. So, it does go up two point two million in that capital assets, but a big part of that was the city accepting roads into its system this year. As I've discussed, and you are familiar with, you're required, on this set of financial statements, to report your net pension liability and your net OPEB liability. OPEB stands for other post-employment benefits, and it's defined, and there's a footnote later that I'll show you, that explains what that is. But that is the unfunded portion of the insurance, it's the unfunded piece of the insurance part of the CERS retirement system. So, the city is required to show on this set, only once a year, not, you know, your regular monthly packets that you're looking at, once a year, the city is required to present that number, so that users of your financial statements, banks, or whomever that might be, have an interest in the city's financial, know what that number is. Okay? The net impact, there's pieces to this. There's deferred inflows, there's deferred outflows, and then there's the actual liability. The impact on the city's financial statements for fiscal year nineteen was about seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, that hit the city's bottom line on this full accrual set of financial statements. So, it was a seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar hit, on the next page, when it talks, when I talk about what your net income was. But that was not a cash outgo. The city's exposure to the net pension liability, from what we hear, see, talk, in our opinion, is the contribution that the city has to pay into the system for its employees, which, right now, you might be familiar with, is at a twelve percent increase cap, up through fiscal year twenty-eight, I think. So, from a budgetary perspective, your all's exposure, as you could probably expect, that rate's gonna go up for twelve percent of what it is now, every year, depending on if they make any changes to that. On the next page, on page twelve, I mentioned previously, the statement of activities. This is the full accrual. So, this is basically saying, full accrual accounting, debt, capital assets, depreciating capital assets, picking up the pension liability, everything. What was the city's net income? How did it do? What was its financial performance for fiscal year nineteen? And the answer at the bottom, it says, "Change in net position, under governmental activities." It has the columns, again, it has governmental activities, it has business-type activities. Under governmental activities, it says, "Change in net position, three million eight hundred twelve thousand and seventeen dollars." So, that is, in effect, net income of three million eight hundred twelve thousand and seventeen dollars for the governmental activities. That's not the golf course or the Utility Commission. The golf course and Utility Commission combined had a net, a net change in net position of four hundred and seventy-one thousand and twenty-eight dollars. That's a big number for the governmental activities. There's two pieces that drove that. One is picking up two million dollars in assets for the roads that were accepted into the city's system. That's a big piece of that number. Another piece of that number is, the city elected to pay an additional one million dollars down on its debt, that was in addition to what was required. So, that goes into that number. So, those are the two biggest pieces, why that's at three point eight million for an If you'll turn to page thirteen, this is the set of statements I was mentioning to you, that is on a modified accrual basis of accounting. It has the general fund separated. The general fund is considered a major fund, so it's required to be presented separately, so everyone can see what the general fund's activity was for the year. The other funds are not required to be presented separately, so they're lumped together. However, on page fifty-seven and fifty-eight, it breaks down those funds for you. So, they're not required to be presented separately here, but if you want to see, well, how did the bus fund do, how did the road fund do, how did the ABC fund do, that information is provided to you on page fifty-seven and fifty-eight, so that you can see it. I mentioned earlier, in the general fund, the cash went up six hundred thousand dollars, which was good. That was in addition to an additional million dollars being paid down on debt, which was good. The non-major governmental funds show on the next page, on page fourteen, a decrease in fund balance, or net income, of a hundred and twenty-six thousand. That was, in my opinion, what I can tell by design, the ABC fund had additional funds that were not expended, that were budgeted this year to be spent, as did the road fund. Additional road work was budgeted and paid for, and so that resulted in that net change of fund balance being a negative. Typically, in the non-major governmental funds, the way those are set up, you're not gonna see a net income, you're gonna see a breakeven. You know, the bus fund's just gonna cover its expenditures, same with the road fund and that kind of thing. On page fifteen, I mentioned previously, this breaks out the Utility Commission and the golf course for you. I'm gonna focus on the golf course. The Utility Commission, its audited financial statements were presented to the Utility Commission, and went over in detail, and there's a separate report. And we took the numbers from that report, and we've put them into the city's financials, because they are considered a component of the city. So, focusing on the golf course today, on this set of financial statements, you can see, the golf course is cash, you can see its capital assets, and you can see its total net position. There's no net pension liability, or OPEB liability for the golf course, because they don't, the golf course does not have an employee that participates in CERS, the County Employees Retirement System. So, that's why that's zero for the golf course. On the next page, it shows you the revenues and expenditures for the golf course for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. These statements are on, anytime you have a business-type activity, governmental accounting standards requires it to be on a full accrual, so showing debt, showing capital assets, everything that I was mentioning. So, the golf course for fiscal year nineteen, its revenues were four hundred and fifty-four thousand. That was a slight decrease from fiscal year eighteen, fiscal, that's about a sixteen thousand dollar drop from fiscal year eighteen. So, a little bit less of a year. However, expenses, they also dropped expenses by about the same amount. So, the revenues were down, the expenses were down, so they ended up about the same place there. If you follow, if you follow, if you're on page sixteen, it starts with operating revenues, and then it goes to operating expenses. Then there's non-operating, which is interest. And if you go down, there's a column there that says, "Transfers in." That number's two hundred and seventy-seven thousand and seventy-seven dollars. Transfers in is from the general fund to pay the golf course's debt. So, what the set of financial statements is showing you, it's showing you the transfers from the general fund to cover the golf course's debt. So, the golf course shows a change in net position of two hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and eight, or a net income of two hundred and nine thousand dollars and seven, two hundred and nine thousand dollars, seven hundred and eight, but that's with $209,708, but that's with the general fund giving it the money to pay down it, to pay its debt. On the next page, on page seventeen, anytime you have a business type activity, the statement of cash flows is a very important statement. It provides a lot of good and useful information. One thing, you know, that when I presented the utility commission audit, we talked about that was a positive for the utility commission was the cash that it generates from operations is more than sufficient to cover its debt service needs and its capital asset needs. On the, on the golf course, it tells you the other side of it because it shows net cash provided by operating activities of $91,532. It says net cash used in capital and related financing activities, $388,126. So, what that's telling you is the golf course does not generate sufficient cash to cover debt, to cover its capital needs, hence the transfer needed from the general fund. So, that's really all I wanted to point out there. You know, it shows you that the golf course's cash is down 18,000, which is relatively Beginning on the next page, on page eighteen, is the footnotes to the financial statements. If you've seen these reports before, you'll, you'll know there's a lot of information that's covered in the footnotes. The footnotes are designed to support all the numbers that are, that I just went over, to provide additional information, to talk about the basis of accounting, for debt issues, to tell you more about the debt that the city has, when they're, when it's scheduled to be paid off, et cetera, et cetera. On page, I'm just going to cover a couple of things within the footnotes. On page four, it shows the capital assets of the city, and you can see the heading governmental activities. On page twenty-six, you can see the heading governmental activities. Okay. On page twenty-six, governmental activities, that's the assets of the city that would, been purchased by the general fund, the road fund, the ABC fund, the bus fund. So, this is showing the assets of the governmental activities. On the next page, showing you a summary of the assets. On the next page, page twenty-seven, the business type activities, this is showing you a summary of the assets of the utility commission and the golf course lumped together. At the bottom of page twenty-seven, it's giving you more information on the city's debt. It's breaking down who the city has debt with and when those debt services are scheduled, debt service payments are scheduled to be made. And on page twenty-nine, it breaks it out for the utility commission and the golf course. One important thing on page thirty-one that you will see and you may be aware of that's noteworthy, is I mentioned the general fund having to cover the golf course's debt service of $277,000, I believe it was. Well, part of that is scheduled to be paid off here shortly. The front nine is scheduled to be paid off in fiscal year twenty, which is the year you're in now. So, it's, has it been paid off?
It's already paid off.
It just got paid off?
It's paid off. It's, it's over with, yeah. We paid $208,000 on it about a week or two ago.
There you go. So, that's paid off. So, what that means is the, the general fund will not be required to cover as much as it did in fiscal year nineteen. So, that will be savings in the future now that, that, that debt is paid off.
Well, yes and no. The back nine was sixty-four, but now that goes up to 138.
Yeah, I had that.
And I don't know how that came about, but they said, once, once we get one debt knocked down, the other one's going to rise up.
Yeah. Yeah, it was going to be not a full savings, but maybe 150 or so.
Well, it'd be 138 minus 277.
Yeah. It staggers every year. That debt service changes. So, yeah, that's a good point. On page thirty-two, retirement plan, it gives you all the information on footnote seven and footnote eight about the net pension liability and the net OPEB liability. And I mentioned earlier about the increase in CERS rates. 12% increase works out to about, around $48,000 a year for the general fund and maybe about $12,000 a year for the utility commission. On page forty-one, the Oldham-McGrange Development Authority is considered, it was a joint venture and gets rolled up into the city's financial statements as well as it has been in the past. So, I just draw your attention to that footnote, it gives you more information on that. On page forty-four, this is where you can find information on how the city did compared to what was budgeted. So, I'm just drawing attention to that to show you where that is. There's a lot of useful information. It gives you line by line what was budgeted and what was the actual, and how did that On page forty-seven, there is additional required schedules. All of these schedules that you see for the net pension liability and the net OPEB liability, they're all required. They're required to be presented so that all the users have this information about that liability, what the assumptions were that went into calculating it, what's the history of it, what's the payroll, what's the contributions, all of it's required. And we have it all in there as required. On page, well, and I mentioned previously, page fifty-seven and fifty-eight, I won't cover it in detail, but on page fifty-seven and fifty-eight, it gives you the other governmental funds. So, this is basically telling you what, how they did during fiscal year nineteen. What was the income or loss? How much cash does it have, et cetera? So, that takes you through the financial statements. There's just a lot of information, so hopefully what I covered was helpful. On page fifty-nine and sixty, I mentioned earlier, there's two reports within that book. One is the auditor's report, which is our opinion on the financial statements, and the other is the independent auditor's report on internal control. An important thing about the independent auditor's report on internal control is it does not express an opinion. As part of our audit, we are engaged to assess the city's internal financial controls and report any deficiencies that we identify in internal control. The report does not express an opinion to guarantee that we've identified all deficiencies. It's just to report any deficiencies that we identify. So, this is the report where you typically, if you hear the word audit finding, this is where that's at. Okay? That's, this is where that shows up. This year, fiscal year nineteen, there were two internal control findings, which is an, in fiscal year eighteen, there was four. There was two findings corrected and resolved from the previous fiscal year. One was related to a bank, an error in a bank reconciliation, and the other was related to, if you remember, the city's deposits not being correctly collateralized and covered by FDIC insurance coverage. This year, there's two findings in the report again, which are repeat findings. One is related to, the, the first one, I'm on page sixty-one, the city should have internal controls in place to enable it to accurately record all transactions, including year-end accrual transactions. This is related to when the auditor shows up to audit the city's financials, we're presented with a trial balance, which is a record of all the city's financial activity for the fiscal year. And when we come and do, when we did the audit this year, there was material audit adjustments. And there's actually going to be a list attached to your letter that shows those adjustments. So, this finding is the same finding that we had in fiscal year eighteen, and it's related to us having to make corrections so that when we say the opinion is fair and it's a clean audit opinion, we're saying we had to make adjustments to get those financials and those numbers to that point. I would draw your all's attention to a change this year, even though it's a repeat finding, a change this year to the city's response to that finding. In the past, the city has taken a position of accepting it, accepting it as a, you know, allow the auditor to make the adjustments, and we'll just accept it. We won't have to hire a consultant or incur additional costs, or the staff have to, to do that. This year, if you read the response, the city has responded that the city is in the process of implementing new internal controls to ensure the year-end close is done accurately and to ensure the city's accounting records are in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. The city's response to this really started during the audit because within the finance department, they worked very hard in trying to correct this, and there was noticeable improvement in it. And right now, the city's intention and response is to build on that progress, and the goal would be to eliminate it beginning in fiscal year twenty. The second finding is one that you guys have had for a long time, and it's the shit, the city should have internal controls in place that enable it to prepare complete financial statements. As the auditors, you have engaged us to draft the financial statements and the related footnotes, and you all review and approve those. That is a common thing across the state. Part of it for the auditors to draft the financial statements. It's not unusual, it's not uncommon. The reason that the finding is here is that the city should have folks in place that if the auditor didn't do it, could do it and could understand it and make sure that it's done properly and accurately without the auditor's assistance. Finding number one and two, in my opinion, sort of go hand in hand, meaning if the city corrects finding one, it's likely that finding two would be corrected as well. But finding two is not unusual for cities to have. That is everything I have in the report. Do you guys have questions that I could answer or information that I could clarify on what's in the report?
Anyone like to ask Kevin a question at this time? Lot of information here, sixty-one pages worth. So, does anyone, I'm not saying no one's capable of asking a question, but, but it just a lot of moving of numbers and, the good news is, from my standpoint, there's no fraud, there's no missing money, no cash missing, no nothing, that, that, that's huge in my opinion. I will say to the council, Mayor Davenport was responsible during his tenure of six months of this, this operation, and I was responsible for the last six months. I do like the fact that after all said and done at the end of the year, Mayor, this be part of your, your effort to put together a budget, but years in, it was my effort to try to control the budget in my six months, but the city basically made $601,753. That's what we're up, cash. Correct, Kevin?
Uh, I, yeah, I think that, that number was taking out of consideration the comp tax.
Well, I'm saying after we back out comp tax, we had income of $5,074, we spent $4,473 for a net savings or a cash carryover, 601,753 is what I have.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Okay. So, that's the good news. The not-so-good news is, are the findings. And I've told you, and I changed our position statement on that within the management opinion, and no findings is what I strive to get to. I honestly don't know if we can ever get there because what I've seen Heather and Stephanie have to deal with, with your involvement, has just been tremendous, tremendous accounting entries, and it's huge, you know, because I've listened to it, I've heard you all on the phone for hours trying to understand, to get these things categorically right. And I'm hoping we can eliminate the last two findings because any findings to me in operation of a city are probably unacceptable. But I understand with Stephanie and Heather, they've done their very best, sixty-one pages of numbers and trying to move 10 million here and there and every, every which way. We'll try to work on that, and that's the reason I answered the management response the way I did. I'm not going to sit here and say, we're going to depend on you to do it. We're going to do it, and we're going to try our best to make sure that our financial department gets there. Because it's not easy, and we do not have certified public accountants, accountants on the payroll. We don't have that. Now, if we wanted to pay for CPAs to be on the payroll and CFOs and everything that could understand what you expect them to do, we can go that route. But in the past, we've chosen not to do that, and, and I'm willing to guarantee to the general public, because I take this as a responsibility, we're going to correct these findings and get these internal controls correct. And, but yet, being said, it's, it's, it's a huge amount of entries and reconciliations and all this language you talk about of trying to move this stuff exactly into the area that you expected to be as a CPA. Correct?
Yes, it's, it's, the, the city has grown, the city has a lot of moving pieces, and it is not easy. I, I recognize that, and governmental accounting standards by their design don't, they don't, it doesn't make it easy. You know, you're having, you're having the report two separate ways.
I called Department of Local Government on this exact issue, and I said, we're on accrual basis of accounting, whereas counties are on a city basis, cash basis, I mean, cash basis. And I'm somewhat told that it's a county audit is not as thorough as what you expect from your viewpoint, from a city auditor's perspective. Could you maybe talk about the difference of a cash basis audit versus accrual basis?
Yeah, a cash basis audit is, it's, cash means cash. So, you're reporting net income based off of the day you cut the check, the day you take the money in. So, you cut a check, the date you write it, that's your expense. The day you receive money, that's the date that it's revenue. Okay? On an accrual basis of accounting, you all have to recognize income when it's earned or due and expenditures when they're incurred. So, if you guys have a contractor come out and do work somewhere in the city on June 28th, and they don't bill you for a month and a half, you have to book an accounts payable and recognize that expense. You have to recognize everything you incurred as of June 30th as an expense. All of your, all of your tax revenue, all your dollars that come in from citizens that are for the quarter ending June 30, 2019, for example, you have to, in July and August, recognize that this money that we just got isn't for this year we're currently in, this month where we're attending this meeting that you're in. It's actually for the prior year. So, we have to go in and we have to book an entry to book that as accounts receivable and date that back. A cash basis audit doesn't do that. A cash basis audit doesn't have to recognize the net pension liability, the net OPEB liability, doesn't have to go through a series of calculations to say, okay, what is the county's share of that liability and book the different categories of it and disclose all of that information. It doesn't have to record debt, it doesn't have to break out current debt, long-term debt. So, there's just a lot, those are just some examples. So, there's a lot that goes into accrual. But in, in the county, cash audit, you, you have to do it both ways. You have to do a modified accrual, which is part accrual, but not full accrual, and then you have to do an accrual, a separate set of financial statements. Then you have to do a reconciliation between the two to show everybody. So, there's just a, there's a lot more that goes into it. So, it, it's a more, an accrual audit is, it's that way for a reason to have the cities do it because it gives you a better reflection of the complete picture.
So, to get the utility audit out by September and maybe the golf course out by September, which I'd like to get to too, but since we're still booking things in August and September and backdating them because they're, came, they were due in the fiscal year prior to June 30th.
Right.
They're, you were able to do their audits because at that moment, you're treating them as a business type of entity by themselves, correct?
Right. The, well, yeah, typically the earliest, we do, I believe, over twenty city audits, and typically, and I'll answer that, typically, the earliest is beginning of October that we would ever issue a report, maybe late September, but typically... issue a report, maybe late September, but typically, early October is the earliest, because you have to wait those couple of months, because you don't know a lot of the money you're getting, you don't know where it's coming from until you get it. You know, the businesses file the returns and send it to you, and that's when you know what you get. The utility commission is different, because it is a fee-based, the revenue is fee-based. So, they send out their bills in June, or they send it out in early July for June, and they have reports that they know what they billed. And they're going to collect that, or what's going to happen, the customers are going to get shut off. So, it's a lot easier to clear, close out the utility commission's books as a fee-based entity, where they're charging for services. The city has to wait to see what it gets, based off of what people file. So, you know, like I said, typically, the earliest reporting on that, on my end, is beginning of October, maybe late September, and it can certainly be done, you know, in that timeframe, if you guys are able to, and want to target that. But, that'd be the soonest.
Anyone else at this time? Nothing?
Yes, sir.
I have one more thing, there's the letter in front of you. You guys get this every year. This is a required communication between the auditor and those charging governance, so in your all's case, the city council and the mayor. This letter is designed to communicate certain things that might not otherwise show up in the audit report. You know, did we have any difficulties? Did we disagree? You know, we proposed an adjustment, and you guys said no, and we disagreed, and we never agreed. We didn't have anything like that. There's really nothing in this letter to report that is an area of concern. The only information in this letter I draw your attention to is it does give you the journal entries. So, it's the fourth page there, so it kind of shows you the different things, from an accounting perspective, we had to do during the audit. But otherwise, I didn't have anything else in that letter to go over with you. Hopefully, I didn't take too long, and I hope that what I did cover was helpful. And, you know, I think Stephanie will tell you, I try to be as responsive as possible and take questions throughout the year. So, if any of you all want to reach out to me about a question in the audit report, I encourage you to do so, I'm happy to explain it. I definitely recognize that all the moving pieces can be hard to follow sometimes.
Okay. Kevin, I think you've given the council a very thorough explanation of where we are, and I really appreciate the clear presentation I think you gave to the council. I think all of them would feel that everything's in accordance with good county principles and standards, so we'll be talking to you, and thank you so much, and have a safe trip back to where, Lexington?
Lexington.
Lexington.
Yeah.
Go back and cheer on the Wildcats tomorrow night.
I'm going.
Okay.
I'll be there.
You got any extra tickets?
No.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much, and I appreciate what you've helped Heather, I think you've been great with them, helping them, and what they've had to reverse back after the year ended on June 30th, has just been a tremendous operation, reversing well into September, back into the year previous, and this accrual basis thing is really, but I think they've really taken in a lot, and learned a lot, and understand more so what you're looking for. So, I appreciate that.
Good.
Thanks a lot. Tell your partner, I'm not going to say partner and what, but tell your partner hello for me.
Okay, I will. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, Jim Urban, he's one of those guys that likes to be home by nine o'clock. So, Jim's here from Planning and Development Office, and he has a couple of items to present to you all tonight, and each of those items, I take it, have been in your pockets, correct? Everyone have those, I believe, I hope. Stephanie and Heather, did they get those items, or just get them tonight?
They just got them tonight.
Okay, is that because we got them Friday?
Yes.
I think we got one of them from Jim. But, go ahead, Jim, introduce yourself, and tell us what you have to bring to the council tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim Urban, Director, Planning and Development Services, council members, I appreciate your attention. What I'm asking you in the first item is that you allow the mayor to sign a contract amendment with BTM for the engineering services on Eden Parkway. Actually, we started this project about a year ago, not quite, and this is a contract amendment. You can see on the page, and I'll put it up on the screen for you, for those of you that want to see it in the audience. It is a not-to-exceed amount of $12,770, and that is an item that is split 50/50 between the city and the county. Last week at the, or two weeks ago, rather, at the fiscal court meeting, the fiscal court allowed a judge to sign this same contract. I'm sorry, I'm going tomorrow for this one, it's the next item, I did that. The reason that we have this change order is that we've discovered that there's an archaeological site that was in the way of the alignment of the roadway, and there was a hundred-foot buffer, and if you stay outside that 100-foot buffer, you don't have to have an archaeologist on-site when you're doing the construction. And we thought that realigning the roadway would be a better idea than having the archaeologist on-site, paying them, and also slowing the project down. So, that's the short version of my explanation, I can...
Could you tell the council what the original contract was originally, and then what the amendment means, how much over and above the original contract? Do you have that in your head?
I believe it was about $85,000, this version of it, which was the construction documents. And this is, again, it'll be $6,385 from the city, and the same amount from the county, if it's approved. So, that brings the total to just under $100,000 for the construction documents.
Okay, and once this, once this adjustment correction amendment's done, then we'll be ready to do what, as far as Eden Parkway goes?
We're going to put it out for bid, and hopefully, we're going to do that at the end of this month, so that at the beginning of May, we can start construction.
Start construction on the, everyone familiar with Eden Parkway, where it now dead ends up past Rollins, and we're going to go straight through the cul-de-sac and on to LaGrange Parkway, and that's what Jim's talking about, for those who not quite sure where he's referring to.
I can't quite get this, any, the whole thing on this, but this is basically, you can see up at the very top of the screen is not constructed, it's the roundabout that's in the town center, and the Eden Parkway extension goes all the way down to LaGrange Parkway at the bottom. So, this is the archaeological site right here, and that line signifies the 100-foot buffer, and so, we're, we could have done construction inside that buffer, but because it involves an archaeologist, and additional cost and time, we decided to realign the roadway. So, you can see that it just really threads right between two creeks and the archaeological site, and connects to LaGrange Parkway.
Okay. So, the original design of the road, am I saying this correctly, actually came closer to the archaeological site, now you want to move it away from it, to get out of that 100-foot buffer?
That's correct, yes.
You need to design that piece of it to meet LaGrange Parkway?
That's why we're doing this contract amendment, yes.
Okay.
And again, this is a not-to-exceed number, so we've talked to BTM and said, "Listen, if there's any other cost savings," you know, that we've tried, we actually have trimmed the cost down a little bit by reviewing it, the hours that they were proposing, and then we put in not-to-exceed, as opposed to a lump sum.
Okay, your number is what for the city to accept tonight?
Well, the total contract amendment is $12,770, and the city's share will be $6,385.
Okay, anyone on the city council willing to make that motion to approve Jim's request?
I'm making a motion to approve Jim's request.
Motion made by, I'll give it to Bill Lambline, second by Joe Davenport. Any discussion on the motion?
I was just kind of looking at the rate schedule here, in terms of payment, and it says $300 an hour for an expert witness. Can you explain what that might be? Everybody else is like 160, 100.
Are you on the...
The second page.
Second page.
Rate schedule R22.
Well, that's in the event that, that's their rate schedule for all of their professional services, and we don't anticipate expert witness. That would be in the event of some kind of challenge or lawsuit.
Okay.
Where they would support us, actually, in that.
Okay, I just saw that, and I thought, whoa, what is going on? What do we need an expert witness for?
That's where they have to raise their hand and swear to tell the truth.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, I have a question. What do we know what the archaeological site is?
To the best of my knowledge, it's a farmstead, it's not prehistoric, and there aren't any, as far as we know, any buried bodies buried there, and that's why there's, there are two buffers, actually. One is a 50-foot buffer, and that's a no-disturb area, and the other, another 50 feet where we could get in there. But, they're looking for things like pottery, or household items, or the potential if there was somebody that was buried outside of the farmstead. There's a foundation there.
Okay, is that answering everyone's questions? We have a motion, a second. Any further questions on the request by Jim? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Thank you. The second item, actually, I think was probably the very first or second time that this council met last year, I stood in front of you, and we discussed Peak Road, and we actually, Eden Parkway extension as well. And at that time, you all had understanding that we would need to spend money on engineering services for Peak Road, and we put out a request for proposals. This is for A-Z, to get all the construction plans done, and I'm going to say this is Peak Road West, so it's west of the roundabout in Oldham Reserve. And we opened bids, we accepted bids up to Friday, January 31st, and we opened them at the following fiscal court meeting on February, a couple days later. And this is the lowest responsive bid. You can see that the total amount is $45,600. The next responsive bid was about $85,000. So, Jim Sillem, the county engineer, and I called the firm to make sure that they understood what the bid was, and that that was the bid they submitted. They said yes. So, what I'm asking you to do is, we don't yet have a contract, I have a draft, but when it's finally prepared, I'd like you all to consider allowing the mayor to sign that contract and accept this bid. Again, this money is split between the city and the county, so your share is half of that. And the amount is, I did the math already, $22,800 of that will be the responsibility of the city. And with that, again, we will have construction documents, should we want to proceed and build Peak Road to the west of the roundabout connecting to LaGrange Parkway.
But, am I correct in saying that the Eden Parkway documents came in two different sets, or two different phases, whereas this one is ready to build a road for this amount of money, correct?
That's correct, yes.
One time, there's no alignment and grade, then a set of construction drawings, correct?
You're absolutely correct. If you look at these line items, it's surveying and topography, preliminary line and grade is all included right away, easements. There won't be utility plans, because we don't anticipate putting utilities in. And then the final plan and bid documents, they've included a number for coming to meetings, and then construction oversight. So, I mean, this is, in my opinion, first of all, it's a good firm. We have done some work with Palmer Engineering in the past, and it's a low bid.
Okay, motion made by Elsie Carter, is her second to Elsie's motion to approve this contract, second by Andrea Essen Price. Any discussion on the motion before the council? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, Jim, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. I'm staying for this next one, and then item number 15.
What we have tonight, everyone, is a second reading and a public hearing on an ordinance amending a zoning map for a portion of Main Street from 301, address to 428 East Main. Mr. Craig Myle, would you like to bring anything to the council before Amy Alvey speaks? Ms. Alvey, she's going to be presenting for the Planning and Development Office, any remarks you'd like to make to the council itself?
Well, I was just wondering if we should have the first reading, and then the public hearing would be part of her presentation.
Well, we're going to do that, but...
This is a second reading.
We're going to have the public...
I mean, second reading, I mean.
Yeah, we're going to do that, but someone's going to make a motion to approve, and second, then they're going to also make a motion to go into a public hearing, but I was just asked you to give a review on what we're about, what this is about tonight.
Oh, okay, well, just for the public, this is a area in East Main Street, right beyond the railroad tracks, at Cedar Avenue. There's about fourteen properties that are currently residential, and the mayor and the council had an idea to try to turn this area into a cool area that might be open for business and small businesses, restaurants, sort of a new-lu type concept. And so, there's a zoning mode called CN, Commercial Neighborhood, which transforms a residential neighborhood with, into the opportunity to have businesses carried on inside it. And that's...
Okay.
The process we had to go through is, we presented this to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Planning and Zoning approved it, and then it comes back to the city for ultimate amendment of the map, because under the comprehensive plan, the city has jurisdiction over all changes to zoning within the city limits.
Okay. Okay, that being said, would it be our city council person would like to make a motion to go ahead and approve this zoning change? And I'll need a motion, a second, then I'll ask for a motion, a second, go into a public hearing.
I just have one thing really fast, and I don't know if this is the time or not. We didn't get to do this in our meeting in February, and I just wanted to make note that it says the second reading was done February 3rd. On our paper, it needs to get corrected to March 2nd.
Right, I noticed that, too.
The ordinance needs to be corrected.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to accept with that adjustment.
Okay, motion made. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, I was in favor, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Is that what you're asking for?
Yes.
To change that? Okay, now I need a motion to approve this zoning change. Okay, motion made by Leslie, is her second by Trey Kammer. Okay, we have a motion, a second, so now, could I entertain a motion to go into a public hearing, and I'm going to let Amy. Motion made by Trey, second by Andrea. If I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Welcome, Amy Alvey.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening. Amy Alvey with Oldham County Planning and Development Services. As Attorney Craig Myle stated, this is ordinance 1-2020, which was an application filed by the City of LaGrange for approval of the zoning map amendment, and for the fourteen properties between 301 East Main Street through 423 East Main Street. The properties are currently zoned R2A residential, and they are being proposed to be rezoned to CN, Commercial Neighborhood. This is an aerial view of the property. All of the properties highlighted in red are the subject properties for this zoning change. This is just an aerial view, shows existing structures and driveways. This is the future land use map on there. There we go, there's the future land use map, just shows that it is, shows it as single family there. This is the train depot here, it's shown as institutional, because it's owned by the county. There's been no previous actions before the city regarding this property. This is the case history, as Beech said, this has been going on since September the 30th. We did have a community meeting, then we had different notices that were sent out to the joining property owners regarding the planning commission meeting in November, and then we had first reading in January, and then we also had sent out notices in February, but then we rescinded those, to send those back out in, for the hearing that is here today. So, the city is requesting a zoning change on fourteen tracks of land along East Main Street from RTU to CN. The tracks are located between Cedar and Mulberry Avenue, which is also known as Eddie Mondo Way, and is approximately three acres in size. Per KRS 10212, it outlines what the requirements are for a zoning change. I won't read that verbatim, but it just talks about having at least one public hearing and making findings of facts. So, a meeting was held by the City of LaGrange on September the 30th of 2019, at the LaGrange Train Museum, with the property owners of the subject parcels, and at that meeting, nine of the fourteen property owners that... meeting, nine of the 14 property owners that were present, and they were all in favor of moving forward with this. So highlighted in green are the non-property owners that were present and in favor of moving forward with this zoning change. On November 4th of 2019, LaGrange City Council passed a resolution, series three, sorry, number three, series 2019, that was authorizing the mayor or his designate to make the application for the zoning change. And then it went to the planning commission, November 26th, with a recommendation to the city on a vote of 11 to 0. So per section 280010 of the zoning map amendment procedures and development plan requirements, item B exempts. It states that applications for amendments to zoning maps which are initiated by the commission or legislative body having zoning authority over the affected property shall be exempt from the development plan and building, binding, I'm sorry, binding element section of the ordinance. Normally when you see a zoning change come before city council, you'll see a development plan of what they want to exactly do with the property. And this section exempts the commission or legislative bodies that are requesting that. By changing the zoning from R2A to CN, it would allow uses such as business and professional offices, commercial uses under 10,000 square feet, restaurants without drive-throughs, as well as bed and breakfast establishments by right. So this is a comparison. On the left side, you'll see that is R2A residential. Those are the items that are permitted uses. And then comparing those over here on the right side of everything that is CN. So what you would be able to do in addition by having this zoning change is everything that is in white on the right side. So you could have farmers markets, restaurants without drive-throughs, retail and personal service establishments under 10,000 square feet, library, museums, and art galleries, parks, playgrounds, community centers, and business and professional offices as well. And you can have two-family and multifamily dwellings too. So this is the same thing that, as compared to the first slide, these are conditional uses. So if anybody wanted to do any of these items on either side, it requires a public hearing process by your LaGrange Board of Adjustments. And they have to give justification of why they want to do it. It is a public hearing process, so all adjoining properties are notified and come, and can come speak in favor or in opposition. So again, anything that is in white would be an additional thing that they would be able to apply for and ask for approval. Again, these are conditional uses, not permitted. So those would be veterinarian hospitals, community buildings, and facilities, manufactured home, and a sewage treatment plant. So according to the applicant's justification statement that was written by Attorney Craig Moll, its purpose of the zoning map amendment is to encourage economic vitality in an area by a mix of residential and business uses, re-recognizing the importance of the train museum as a tourism attraction and venue for public events. So the justification further, goes into further detail of other items there, and that is also in your staff report. These are just some pictures that were taken. So this gives you the East Main Street, Jericho Road, Kentucky 712. So this is going towards Jericho Road. This is looking back into town. This is the west view. So these are the subject properties. This is 301 East Main, 305, 307, 311, 313, 401, 403, 405, 413, 415, 417, 419, 421, and 423. So in summary, this is a zoning change request initiated by the City of LaGrange requesting a zoning change on 14 tracts from R2A to CN, Commercial Neighborhood. Happy to answer any questions.
One question I'd have.
Yes, sir.
Right now, you said you put something on, on any, on a lot evidently with certain approvals, 10,000 feet or less, or less. So my question would be, if a lot is 7,500 square feet or 8,000, does that mean, if it's 10,000 feet or less, could you take up the whole lot with an 8,000 square foot building?
No.
Doesn't there have to be parking considered based on, even though it says 10,000 feet or less, you still had to have parking accommodations, correct?
Correct. Parking, impervious surface requirements, and maximum lot coverage is all defined in CN. So if anyone wanted to do any additions to any existing structures, they would have to comply with the setbacks of the Commercial Neighborhood District. But if they left the building standing as is and wanted to convert it into a coffee shop, they would just go through the building permit process.
A concern I would have too, coming in off the alleys, it's my intention, if this rezoning passes tonight, that these properties will be under fairly strict guidelines through your office as what can be done with them. You know, I want it to stay nice, appropriate, clean, sharp-looking, but also coming in off the backside of the alleys, I want to think about the people on the backside of that alley as much as I do these people here, right? So can we work, have assurances coming off the backside and having parking coming in off the backside that your office will make sure that's done appropriately, Jim or Amy?
Well, as best we can. We don't anticipate large-scale uses of these properties.
Okay.
And, you know, for the most part, parking is probably the one deterrent for that, to not expand so they're so large. I think the issue is going to be whether or not they can even make turns off the alley into their parkings, into their yards, and whether they even want to. So some of them have garages or buildings in the back, and they, they would have to demolish those in order to use the alley. So, you know, I think as we see each one come, and we've had a rezoning case right across the street from the building here on the first two houses, that we've not seen any additional use other than one was restored from Dr. Sparks's office to a attorney's office, and there's parking nearby. So we will work, though, obviously, with anybody that wants to come in and make any changes, they have to go through building codes. That's the, another issue.
We all want to go through building codes and also make sure our code enforcement officer has the ability to, to keep this, these 14 houses looking like we want them to look, you know, within the guidelines.
That will be up to the property owners to make sure that happens.
Okay. You finished, Amy?
Good.
Okay, we're going to go ahead into the public hearing. I'll just say this has been initiated, this zoning change by the city. No individual has come in here alone. This is going to be a blanket type of zoning. So with that being said, is there any here, anyone here tonight would like to support the change of this zoning from R2 to C-N? Anyone in support here tonight that'd like to speak publicly? Would you like to say something, sir, and give us your name and?
No, I just wanted, I support.
Why don't you come on up and state your name and just tell us what property you own? So get you on the record, unless you'd rather not do that. I appreciate you coming, though.
Thank you. Pete Fugate now on 307 East Main, and it sounds like a great idea. And thank everybody who had anything to do with it.
Thank you, Mr. Fugate. Appreciate you.
I will not be hired as a speaker.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else here in support? If you are, your chances now. Anyone here tonight in opposition? No one in opposed to it, correct? Okay. No closing statements by Mr. Fugate or by the opposition, so I guess we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. So who would like to make a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Trey Kammer.
Second.
Second by Leslie Wright.
I could have done that.
Any discussion on the motion? If I was in favor of the motion, let me know. Saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the subject of the change of zoning is, lays on the council table. So would the council like to discuss it, or you have a, do you have a ordinance prepared?
There, there is some form language in there. Basically, you have to make findings of fact and a recommend, and a conclusion. If findings of fact, it has to be that it's as simple as it's, it complies with the comprehensive plan. And if it, if it's compliant with the comprehensive plan, that alone is enough, but you could also say, you could make a finding that it's, it is due to changes in the character and nature of the neighborhood that this zoning is appropriate, which is, you could, you could adopt the findings of the planning commission and their recommendation, which would be a simple way to put it. But you do just need to make findings of fact and then conclusion, and you conclude that it's appropriate.
Okay. Anyone willing to try?
I'd like to ask if I can get a copy of the sheet, the page you're showing, the cans and cans.
Anyone want to make a motion to try to?
Mayor, before we make that motion, I would like to make sure that the second reading date is changed correct, to the correct date on the, I think it says the 3rd, I believe the day's 2nd, isn't it?
I think we already voted on that, and I think we've voted to
You're out there talking to Ted.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry. I didn't even realize you were absent till after we voted. You're out there talking to Ted.
Folks, one thing I just noticed in looking at the draft here is there is a, page, page four inadvertently includes two properties on the description, two properties that we were contemplating at one point in time on Washington Street. So that page should be erased or pulled out. The two, the two properties that are not included in this are 205 East Washington and 207 East Washington. But the other 14 properties are, their legal descriptions are
On Main Street that Amy talked about tonight.
Right. So the, are the 14 properties are described, this is what actually gets sent to the PVA and everything, and how they get, how it gets changed.
So I need to amend my motion to accept and, and say, I'll make the amendment again to remove 205 East Washington and 207 East Washington? Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, what about this findings of fact, Mr. Craig Moll? Is he, is he going to just adopt the findings of fact of the planning commission, or anything added from Trey's motion that needs to be into the record that you just explained a moment ago? Simplify it for him so he can get it into the record?
I don't think we have to simplify it too much for Trey.
Well, yeah, but he needs to
Pretty simple. No, there's some recommended language on, on page two of the application, which says zoning map amendment, motion to approve the zoning map amendment because. And then, A, it complies with the objectives of the comprehensive plan. And then, C, there have been changes of economic, physical, or social nature within the area involved which were not anticipated in adopting the comprehensive plan. That's, that's a, that's a significant enough findings of fact.
Okay. And Trey said that?
Yeah, I think Trey was thinking that.
Yes. I agree with the statement as the city attorney has, has read.
Okay, motion was made by Trey. And who seconded that motion?
What's, what's the motion? The motion's based on the findings of planning and zoning, is that correct? Okay.
All right. Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know. Saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you all so very much. I'm hopeful that some nice things will happen down through that corridor there, and it'll be done correctly and appropriately across from the train museum, and there'd just be a continuation for the opportunity for someone to take one of those houses and do something neat with it, or live in it for, for the duration. So, okay, that being said, we have a second reading. Jim, are y'all finished tonight? Okay, thank you all for coming, you and Amy. Do you need something? Okay, okay, I'm sorry. We have a second reading, a public hearing of ordinance 2-20, ordinance adopting amendments and corrections relating to the utility commission rates. Mr. Trey Kammer, I believe, on that one.
As far as just to give an overview?
Yes, sir. And then you, I think you're going to introduce it and get a motion on it?
Yes, so I will introduce for a second reading in public hearing an ordinance 2-20, an ordinance adopting amendments and corrections related to the utility commission rate. So as we went over last month, 5260 is a, is part of that correction. It should have been 5%. We found, I believe, in 2016, I believe, I might be wrong on the date, but a previous council had voted to adjust the rate to 5%. So this was a correction as part of the discussion and review of the sewer and water ordinances. 5258, and 5256, and 5267 were all, and we went over this last month as well, but adding a column for the tap fee outside of the city and adjusting the tap fee to include inside the city. So we'll now effectively have two separate columns. Previously, it was one column with one single rate. And as far as just some additional notes, we did bring this to the LaGrange Utilities Commission for their board to review and provide a recommendation, and they were in favor of making these adjustments.
Okay. So you'd like to move to adopt this ordinance before the city council tonight?
Yes, I, I can make that motion to accept ordinance to series 2020.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Andrea Essen Price. Okay, now I need a motion to go into a public hearing. So motion, motion made by Leslie Wright.
A second.
Second by Trey Kammer. If I was in favor of the motion, let me know. Saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we're now in a public hearing concerning this rate schedule and what Trey has just elaborated on. Is the council pretty familiar with what's taking place here? You are? Okay, you understand? Okay, make sure, council, because this has come from a committee that's been working on this for how many months, Trey? Six, six months or better?
At least.
Several.
At least to try to get this to the table tonight. So anyone here tonight want to come forward and support this ordinance before the council? In this change of some rate structures, anyone here to support that? Okay, no one here to support it? Is anyone here to oppose it? Okay, no one's here for it or against it. So I'll go ahead, I guess, and close the public hearing. Well, I won't close it, I'll entertain a motion to close it. Who'd like to make that motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Trey, second by
Second.
Leslie. Any discussion on the motion? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know. Saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any discussion among the council based on what's before the council tonight? We have a motion and a second. Okay, I was in favor of the motion, let me know. Saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Trey. I want to thank that committee for, who's all on that committee, Trey? Yourself and who?
This is the
Utilities Committee?
Utilities. So this is myself, Joe, and Debbie.
Also want to appreciate the commission itself, Ted, for Trey's coming to the commission and you all working together on this, and hopefully it serves its purpose down the road. Thank you all.
If, if I could, this, this, this ordinance that we had to file this correction brings to light a problem that the council has with the accuracy of the published versions of our ordinances. Because Ted remembers a previous council passed this law. of our ordinances, because Ted remembers a previous council passed this law, changing the, you know, lowering the percentage from seven percent to five percent. But, you know, when it got sent over to our publisher, it didn't make it into the book. So Ted, Ted ran into another thing where the, the rate for tap fees inside the city was, should be, and according to their procedures, should be fifteen hundred dollars for water tap fees, but the, the book, the published version of this said one thousand. So, and this is not the first time that I've run into inconsistencies in, in the language of what we think it is and what it, it should be. So I don't know what the solution to that is. I mean, according to the, the KRS, the, you're required to go through your, all your ordinances every five years and come up with amendments and, and that. So we, you know, you might want to have a review committee or something, I'm not sure.
How many ordinance do we have on the books? Anyone know that answer?
I, I can show it to you here, here we go.
I mean, what's hap, well, well, that's what I'm saying. And what, what's, what usually happens with ordinances and finding out things about them is for an issue to come up that causes you to go into the discovery of what it presently says and how it's going to say in the future, and that's when you learn about these things. But if, if your suggestion is to, I'm okay with keeping up the date of five years, but if that be the case, we got to work on sixty-one pages per meeting. Okay, so we can work on it, Mr. Craig Mau?
Yeah, and, you know, if it makes us feel any better, this, this happens in Frankfurt, too. Okay, this happens with Kentucky statute, so.
Okay, well, that makes me feel better.
Good.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Craig Mau. Okay, we have that, that second hearing done, we move to item fifteen. Roads Public Safety Police Environmental Committee. I think this comes, these two items, I think, come from strictly the roads section of that committee. So our first thing to address is item one, address one-one-one West Main Street Sidewalk Encroachment. I think Joe Davenport led that committee, leads it and is chair of that, and I think they've met. But I would say that Andy Work is here tonight, who owns one-one-one West Main Street. So Mayor Davenport, if you'd like to go ahead and brief the council on what the issue is, be glad to listen to what you have.
Well, they, what, what we discussed was the, on the encroachment is for the steps. Actually, a, a- There'll be a, a three-foot, eight-inch platform coming out for, for the steps to come, to go into the building because of, of what they got to do.
Excuse me, Joe, Andy Work, he's going to present, and I don't know if he's going to put that up on an overhead projector, which he may well do, but Andy's welcome to come forward when you're ready, Mayor, because you're the chair of the committee, so, but-
Yeah, that's, that's fine, because I've got it all.
So this, this, where this has come from, everyone, this has been to the Historic District Commission.
Yes.
They basically approved what his intentions were. I think the Historic District Commission asked his architect to come back with some more detail, but actually gave him the permission to move forward on trying to accomplish the steps to get it to the upstairs of his building, so they felt that would be appropriate, but yet come back for further detail of the steps, the railing and things like that. Would that be a fair assessment, Joe?
Yes, the, the, the reason this encroachment's got to be done for this, these steps is actually to, for the, for the steps inside the building to go up to the second floor.
To meet current building standards.
To make, yeah, the current building codes. So it's got, it's got to be, that's got to be raised, so that's-
And what's it-
To get to the, up those steps.
It was heard by the Historic District Commission, then came the street committee, the road committee. They have heard it, but they felt that the city council needed to hear it as a full body to understand what's taking place and actually give the approval or the denial of that. So, good evening, Andy, are you ready for Andy to speak, Mr. Chairman? Okay. Let's see. Want to raise your right hand for me? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth?
Yes.
About this project?
Yes.
Okay, what's, state your name and your address, Andy.
Andy Work, home address or?
Uh, your home address.
Nineteen thirteen Covey Trace.
Okay. You want to tell us about your project and your ideas here?
Yes. I'm trying to renovate the upstairs to make that usable space, because it's just been stored for the last fifty or so years. Back then, fifty or so years ago, they removed the staircase completely. So now, it's not a renovation on the stairs, it's new construction, and it has to meet current building codes. Problem is, there's not enough space for the proper rise and run, and I can't get an exemption, the State Historical Council wouldn't, wouldn't do that, and they feel the best solution is to put a landing out on the sidewalk, so the steps are the proper rise and run, meeting current safety standards.
Okay, is that, is that, what, is that it?
As far as I know.
Mayor, we, council, we, we actually went over and measured. My concern was what we were going to have, but that from the building, that sidewalk is, is actually nine foot. So you're, you're a little over nine foot, so even with, with this coming out, with the steps on each side coming out three foot, eight inches, you're still going to have six foot there of sidewalk. It's, you know, it's not, so that was only, that was a concern I had going into it. And then Cory, Cory went over and measured, and, but Cory, was it nine foot? Was that a little over nine foot?
Six foot left over.
Six, so we're going to have six foot left over, even from, from the platform to the, to the curb are still going to be six foot sidewalk. So we didn't, we didn't think that would be a concern for us to, to, and we were, we were looking at it, and if Andrea wants to make her statement, because we looked at it, and as anybody was willing to renovate, you know, that part of it, and Andrea, if you wanted, you know, I think Andrea brought up with, go ahead with economic development.
Sure, I, I think anytime that we've got someone wanting to invest in their property on Main Street, I think it's a good thing to try to encourage that and not put roadblocks in their way. I was concerned about what the Historic District Commission had to say about it, and hearing that they were, you know, gave, you know, tentative approval based on the architect's plan. I noted also that several other buildings in LaGrange, Elsie's one, Beach's office is another, have these types of landings with steps coming down from them, so it's not an unheard of thing in our city, and I think anything that we can do to try to encourage, you know, upstairs development is, is a good thing, so I was in favor of it.
Yeah, the, the count, the, man Andrea was, Debbie's on the committee, she was absent, she had some surgery, but that's the way we looked at it. Actually, it's anyone that was willing to renovate a, a historic building on Main Street to get upstairs and, and, you know, create a space for rental, and so we, 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 the committee actually recommended it, and so the presentation was good for the committee, and they gave us all the drawings and went over it and explained it all to us, the inside and out, so we, we felt comfortable with it, so.
Okay, so that being said, anyone else want to comment about what's before the council?
I have, I have a question. Are they stamped drawings?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you want to say that?
Whoever stamped those obviously is not aware of the fact that you cannot have doors swinging into a building. They have to swing out for fire reasons.
I didn't know if that was because it was an historical building.
No, you're putting new doors in, they have to swing out. But you might want to check on that.
Yeah.
And when that happens, I don't know, it, I see some issues, but the doors do have to swing out. You don't have storm doors on commercial buildings.
The night, Mayor, at the night at the Historic District Commission meeting, I was there, and that architect who represents Andy said that anything less than twenty-nine person capacity, that was her opinion, did not have to have swing out doors. Now, and because of, of the low capacity upstairs of this building, or, oh, without the second designated entrance, he can not go more than twenty-nine folks, and that's what his architect said to the Historic District Commission on the swinging in, swinging out, but I don't know, as you're saying, if that's, if that's the case or not, based on amount of people that this is permitted to-
The capacity's figured on its use. Unless you know what the use is, you don't know what the capacity is. Jim, Mr. Urban, am I correct in that statement? Thank you.
So what Mayor's saying, that's going, that door has to swing out. On its use.
Right now, we've just been thinking of office, general office use.
I'm not going to vote, I'm not going to base my vote on what that door does, that's up to you. I'm just telling you, I think that there is an issue there that you need to look into before you go forward with that construction.
I will, definitely I'll check into that.
Well, yeah, but Elsie, it's a modification, and you got to go under the new building codes. You, you know, there's a lot of things happened since your doors were put in to swing in. A lot of things have happened historically, fires, you name it, and they don't want people pushing up against the door to swinging in, so we understand that. So is, Andy, you're finished? Mayor, you have any further comments from your committee? If you, if you don't, you want to make a recommendation to approve what, or whatever your choice would be for Mr. Andy's request?
Yes, I'll make a recommendation to approve.
And a motion been made by Joe Davenport, second by Elsie Carter. Any discussion this point in time on the motion before the council? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Andy, and appreciate you, what you're doing there and, and helping out upstairs of your facility there, okay? Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Okay, item two, under Roads Public Safety Committee, we have item two referring to street parking on West Washington. Mayor, Joe, I think that was your committee as well, so would you like to give us a briefing or refer to Stephanie Winthor's come forward, or what are you going to say?
I will let Stephanie make a presentation. Basically, they're parking on West Washington, and we've had citizens' complaints when the trucks unload for All-Aboard Liquors, and cars are parked there in front of, on Larson Street. They, it's just, it's creating problems to, to get through, so Stephanie took the complaints, and she took pictures, and then, so if you want to, Stephanie, I'll turn it over to you and-
Okay, so the issue is, I'm, probably the past eighteen months, I've received quite a few complaints. Not only myself, but I know that they also call the police department and complain. What happens is, we've got fifty-three right here, and you've got West Washington. Here's City Place, this is All-Aboard Liquors. People are turning into West Washington, and they're coming face to face-
All-Aboard Liquors is up here.
All-Aboard Liquors, right here. Right here. People are turning onto West Washington, and there's cars parked on this whole side. They're turning onto West Washington, and they're coming head-on into a delivery truck with cars parked on both sides, and they can't get down the road. So not only can they not get down the road, but because it's Highway fifty-three, you can't back up from where you came from to get out of there. I have gone, there's another picture here. We did have someone call one time because they had turned, and there was not enough room to get through, and she was panicked and didn't know what to do, so we went down and we helped her get out of the parking spot. This is, she was not parking, she was trying to get down the street.
Okay, he's not parking, he's just trying to get down the street.
Just trying to get down the streets. But if they turn, like I said, if you're going down fifty-three, and you try to turn, and then you come face to face with this, where do you go? You're stuck. So I went and I spoke with All-Aboard Liquors. I realized that they have to have their deliveries, it's a business, all businesses have deliveries, and you have big trucks that make the deliveries. Their deliveries are always Monday through Friday, eight to five, there's not a set time. Delivery drivers kind of work on their own schedule, but those are the timeframes that the deliveries happen. And then I went over to City Place to talk to them and say, hey, could we maybe not park there during the daytime hours during the week? They said, they told me that their employees do not park there, that that parking is always when there's a special event going on, those people park there. You know, I suggested, hey, can you help us out, tell them maybe to park in the City Place parking lot, park around the corner, let's leave this open so we can have traffic coming through when these delivery trucks are here. Go ahead.
Are the delivery trucks maybe delivered from that spot?
Yes.
Or do they get to that parking lot?
No, 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 there, and there's, there's bigger trucks that come through there. But no, they'll pull onto West Washington, they park there, they offload.
They park on Washington.
They park on Washington.
Then I don't think you can make them not park on the other side. I think it's, you gotta do either no parking-
Well, there's, there's a couple options. Now, per our, per our ordinance seventy-two oh four, restrictions and prohibitions on designated streets, the city can determine what streets or portions thereof stopping or parking shall be restricted or prohibited. So I took this before the road committee, and we talked about different ways that we can do this. And one of the options that we had talked about was, on the side of the street where all these cars are right now, we could post some signs for no parking Monday through Friday, eight to five. That way, you're still leaving your weekends open, you're still leaving your, your nights open for any events, any restaurants, anybody coming to our city. Post signs on this side for delivery vehicles only. That way, any delivery vehicles for any of the businesses around there, they can park along there, deliver what they need to, and then move on.
They haven't got any other place to deliver.
Well, because there's nowhere else that they can park.
There's no place they can, there's no place else they can park to deliver.
No, they can't stop on fifty-three, they can't block the alley, because then cars can't get around them at all. I mean, they, this is where they have to go to, to do their deliveries. Those trucks would never make that turn. It's a very small parking lot. I will say, I have a business that also has a small parking lot. These trucks, it's, it's very tight for them to get around, so that truck is pretty limited, and, you know, that business is dependent on that. I would say we'd have a different situation if City Place did not have ample parking, but they have several parking lots, plus they have a lot immediately behind that building if, if someone has mobility issues. So it seemed to me, as part of the Roads Committee, that it would not be limiting that facility too much to curtail the parking on those specific hours. That wouldn't impact-
We have a meeting over there of general public or merchants or whatever, then we're going to have to go all the way over to that parking lot, park, and then walk all the way back, and this other guy's going to get to park his truck right there and unload. That's all I'm going to say.
I'm not sure where else he would park to unload. Where would you have him park to unload? I mean, I'm, I'm just curious.
He could bring a smaller truck or else get into that parking lot, and he should be able to get into that parking lot.
There's bigger trucks that come down here to deliver, though, also. There's full semi trucks that come down that road to deliver, and there's no way they could fit in that parking lot. They do that, and I don't know what City Place gets delivered. I'm sure they have deliveries at City Place also. So that's my presentation. That's the issue, and I'm hoping that you guys can help solve it.
Well, if they didn't, if City Place didn't have all the parking over there, it would be different. Anytime I go down to a meeting at City Place, there's very seldom anybody parked inside those gates behind there. You know, just went down there to coffee talk the other morning, and nobody was parked back there. It was empty. Everybody wanted to park here so they can immediately jump out and walk in, you know it?
Right.
It's, you know, if you go to the mall, it's packed, you don't, you can't get in the front door, you know? I just don't understand why you can't, anybody can walk across the street, it's not that far from their parking lot.
Yes, but the truck driver was expecting the same thing, to be able to jump out of his truck and deliver, and then come on back and get his truck ready.
That's why we're presenting it to you guys.
Who owns the dirt next to the liquor store?
City, City Right Away.
I mean, we could, could we move the street closer to their building if they want their beer delivered? I mean, you know?
That's a grassy, sort of like a ditch line that carries water down the street.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see a sidewalk there like there is over next to City Place.
Yeah, the City Right Away, next to the building, you mean? I see there's a pole there, you can see a pole, a power pole, right behind the truck. And I know that's on this side of the alley, I'm sure it's on this side of the alley, so I don't know if that would work.
They can move poles. I mean, it seems like the vendor is the problem. That's, I mean, City Place, I mean, that's a public street. Cars to park.
We're trying to be business-friendly, and we want our businesses to get their deliveries. If they don't get their deliveries, they don't have the product to sell, and then they'll move on somewhere else.
I went down there myself, I'll tell you what I did. I went down there myself today, and I told Stephanie what I'd done, to talk to Chamber people, and Resendo was not in. Resendo's the campus director for City Place Properties. And where are we, Stephanie?
So, here's All-Aboard Liquors, right here.
That's All-Aboard, but I wish I had a pointer. Do I have a pointer here?
Where do you want me to point to?
Well, I'll come there, I'll come there and point. I want to show you what, and I'm just trying to keep some downtown parking businesses as much as we can, but I don't know if the council would think this is appropriate. See how you work this thing.
Right there, you just pointed. Right there's...
Right here, I don't even know which way I'm going.
Right here.
Where, here?
The City Place, yes.
Okay, what I was, my proposal was to come away from this intersection, away from this intersection, give two specific marked-off parking places, I'm having trouble pointing this thing.
Here, I know what you're talking about, let me point it, I'll point it for you.
I want back off the intersection and give them two defined spaces right there, and those two defined spaces would come about to the back edge of the City Place building, so we get two defined spaces there all day long. And then, once you get past those two defined spaces, I marked it off today, it's about 80 feet from that, front of that second car, from the first car and the second space, all the way down to that crosswalk right there, 80 total feet. Thus, if the beer truck pulls up right there, All-Aboard Liquors entrance, there's going to be a ability for the people to maneuver safely around the truck, because it's going to be a wide area through there.
Not allow any parking here?
Yeah, no parking whatsoever between that second position and all the way down to the crosswalk. And then, if you want to give a couple more spaces below the crosswalk before you get down to the Second Street intersection, you give a couple more. What I was trying to say was, if an economic site consultant comes to City Place to speak to David Bazanis, the Chamber, about a project coming to La Grange, they could park in either one of those two or two spaces, total of four, possibly on the street, instead of back here in the back, go in, do their business, come back out. I don't know if the council feels that's a trade-off, or you just want to eliminate the whole thing, but I was trying to say, I don't know how long City Place has been there, how many, seven years? How long is it, why is this project, why is this situation just now coming up seven years later? You know?
Because the delivery trucks are getting bigger.
Well, no, it's the same beer truck.
No, they had a, they had a smaller one before, I've seen it.
So, anyway.
So, you know, the idea was, or just allow parking here and no parking here, there's got to be some sort of resolution.
That's like a good compromise.
Cars turning and parking.
Eliminate, you know, delivery vehicle only, and then from 9 to 5, and then, you know, reparking for the rest of the other...
So, if I'm making a delivery, I can pull in that spot over there myself in my car and go into the liquor store?
Sure, if you're making a delivery, if you're a delivery truck.
I'm delivering money.
Sure, if you're making a delivery, if you're delivering Girl Scout cookies, right? You're delivering something.
I mean, that's a good, I mean, that's a good compromise. Clear some of the street, not all of it, so that if there's just two or three people coming, they can park close, you know? But in a big event, you're going to be, just like anywhere else, in a larger event, you'd be...
And again, on the evenings and weekends, when we have big events there on weekends, it won't be an issue. They can park wherever they want, we don't have to worry about it.
What was the committee recommendation?
The committee recommendation was Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, no parking on the north side, deliveries only, deliveries only all the time on the other side, but no parking Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, for the whole length of it.
The space for deliveries, would it have a time limit, like 30 minutes or an hour? Like, not that they could park there all day?
I don't think they take that long.
They're in there and out, they're in there and out.
Okay, hear me out, I'm not...
They don't...
Okay, just hear me out. I'm not saying the liquor only is going to be the only delivery truck there. The City Place could also have deliveries for an event or something and park their delivery truck there for eight hours of the whole day. So, I'm not just looking at it from the perspective of All-Aboard Liquors.
Well, one ordinance says no parking for more than, on an 18-wheel, do you get 18-wheel trucks?
Yes.
It says no parking for more than two hours on any city street.
But I see what Trey's saying, if there's an event going on, and a van pulls up to deliver their craft items that they're going to sell the weekend, are they going to be able to park there all day, or 30 minutes in and out? It's a good point.
Chief Colette's here. Greg, chief, you want to get in on this discussion, please, if you'd like to?
Nope.
And I'll let Cory get in on to it, too, since it's a city-maintained street. Yes, sir.
I guess the best I can expand on it, we do have periodic complaints, probably in the last two, three months, maybe had two call-ins and one person come by the office about the restriction of traffic flow through there, and it is primarily a daytime problem when those vehicles are parked next to City Place, and there is a delivery occurring there at the liquor store. So, I mean, it's been a source of complaints, not a daily complaint, but obviously, there's a problem, and of course, my own observations, delivery vehicles are not there for a long period of time, but on the opposite end of the spectrum, we could encounter that when City Place has its events going on there. So, you know, the issue being, if there is long-term commercial vehicle parking there, we have to look at, will it limit an emergency response for a fire apparatus or something like that? Nobody wants to be in the business trying to track down a truck driver to aid a fire response or EMS response to that location. So, I can tell you what, what our impacts have been, but, you know, I was not aware of how much attention this was getting to reach a remedy.
Cory, Russ Nick, you have any comments from Public Works on this street, street elimination of parking?
Nothing major, I was actually trying to figure out how wide the road is right there.
26 feet.
26 feet?
I stepped it off today, three feet at a time, so I came up about 26 feet.
That's a problem you have, your tractor-trailer, which I'd say your smallest delivery trailer's probably 36 feet, which they can't get in the parking lot, it's too tight. Even down the alley, their building's too close. So, I think, one way or another, you're going to have to allow deliveries on Washington Street, there's no way around that. Unless you designated a spot that they can deliver, the first two spots, like you're talking on the first block, as long as, they typically park east of their lot there so they can go right into the entrance, which is pretty much right across the street from where you talked about the first two spots. So, unless you had the City Place spots further down past their first sidewalk, which is about, I don't know, 90 feet to the west, you know, you would almost have to designate their parking for them, because the back of the truck, they'll park right at the entrance, right there at All-Aboard Liquors.
Actually, the truck, Danny told me, Dave pulls in on 53, moves to the left-hand side of the street, one of the trucks, I think Budweiser, he's got two different deliveries on two different days, and that truck will go just beyond his entrance to All-Aboard Liquors and stop on the left-hand side of the street going west.
Like the worst one here.
See, that's the right way to park.
Right, that's a Corona.
And that's the wrong way. That's actually, it's an illegal park, right? You can't park that way on the street. So, they would have to maneuver back through Second Street to get up to park the right way, or down from Main, whatever. You know, I don't know what the resolve would be, I think the proposal from the committee... The proposal from the committee seemed the most logical to me, but if a truck's only there for 30 minutes out of the day, you're not allowing parking just for 30 minutes.
And I don't know if it holds true every week, but during the pre-plan for the CSX project, I spoke with Mr. Doty, and at that time, for that week, he was, he only expects three trucks of the shorter tractor-trailer accommodations per week. I don't know if that changes week to week, but I know during that week, because we had to limit commercial traffic, he only expected three of those type of vehicles, commercial vehicles that you see there for that week, so...
I'm not sure if they have a set schedule on when they actually do their deliveries, if you could make them have a set schedule? On Mondays only, I don't know. Maybe something to talk to All-Aboard Liquors about.
No, I don't think they have any set schedules, they don't have set schedules, don't have same drivers or anything. It just depends on when they get there.
I'd say he could probably set it up, though, right?
What?
As far as when he gets his deliveries.
Uh, that's tough, that's tough.
It sounded kind of at their mercy.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, they...
They tell me when they're coming, and we fit in on their schedule, since La Grange is between Louisville and Cincinnati. A lot of times, it's just where you fit in.
So that they can't stay parked, you can put loading and unloading only, like they do at the airports. You can't park there, you can just drop people off and pick people up, like to eliminate the...
I mean, like I said, you could make a pull-off over here on the side, but on whose dime? Should the city provide that?
When you say pull-off on the side, where are you pointing to?
For a delivery vehicle on the south side, on All-Aboard Liquors side, you have enough grass here.
I saw that.
You could make, I mean, the road's about four feet too narrow.
You don't need them up that close at the intersection, anyway, probably, would you?
That's where he is parking. That's typically where your delivery, right here, is parked in front of the, I don't know if I got this the right way.
Well, he's parking in front of the entrance to All-Aboard.
Right. Well, he's to this way, he's in the grassy area.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he's up above that entrance.
And it's understandable how it's positioning there, because they have to use the lift off the back of the truck, and they're using hydraulic assist to push, it's not like they're hand-carrying boxes, it's, they're using the lifts to get the merchandise inside the store, so the dollies.
As far as from Public Works' point, I don't think, I mean, I have no issues either way. We can provide signs if we want signs, or parking...
Parking going down the hill the way they're parked for by the City Place, and put them in, let them park on the right-hand side, truck it off, if he's got a lift that takes it off, and he wheels it over there, it's no big deal.
But how does he park there if it's full of cars?
Well, you don't, or down in front, going down, nobody parks below the grassy area on down to the corner.
Oh, there's times I go through there in that whole thing, yeah, it's, I've got another picture showing further down where it's completely parked.
So, you're just immobilizing 10 people for one person?
I mean, they'll park all the way down, the whole length of the street.
I make the motion to move forward with the committee's recommendation to not allow parking on the north side and to allow a designated loading and unloading portion on the south side.
I'll second that motion.
A motion by Trey, seconded by Andrea. Any discussion, further discussion on the motion before the council?
I think you're choosing sides.
Hmm?
I think you're choosing sides. I don't think it's right, I don't think you put your opinion right, but that's my opinion.
Let me, let me just say one thing about that, you know, I might not already go here, but I'm going there anyway. Do you realize the revenue we get out of All-Aboard Liquors?
I really don't care.
I do. That's revenue into the city.
I think that's...
That's, that's, that's a business. Do you know how much revenue we get out of City Place? It's a foundation. We don't get anything out of City Place. I respect City Place, I respect Mr. George Rawlings, but you've got to take care of the businesses, the brick-and-waters that bring money into this city. You know, Mr. Rawlings has been nice and helped us out, he's bought police cruisers and that and whatever, but it still doesn't amount to the amount of revenue that comes out of All-Aboard Liquors. So, that's who we need to take care of, is our businesses that bring, that puts revenue into this city.
So, that brings you both across the street.
No, I'm not parking at Crosswalk, we're not talking about Crosswalk.
Well, nobody should be parking on the street where you can't get by either.
That's a duplicate problem, we've got vehicles with City Place and a commercial vehicle restricting traffic.
Mayor, I'll call for the question on the vote, please.
Okay, we got a motion.
I can't park them all the way down in front of City Place.
Andrea's already seconded it. It's a motion on the floor to second. He's calling for the question.
All right. Trey's called for the question. I've learned in Roberts Rules of Order that to end discussion on the, on the, on the discussion, there has to be a vote to end the discussion. So, I'm going to take a vote for Trey's call on the question to end all discussion. So, that being said, Stephanie, would you call the roll to end discussion?
Trey?
Yes.
Mar, uh, Mary's not here, Leslie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And this is on what specifically?
This is to end all discussion of the, on the...
I'm voting yes on that.
Well, you're, you don't get to speak anymore if you end discussion, you understand that?
Well, I'm on anyway.
Okay.
Andrea?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. So, the motion passes to, for Trey's, he's got a motion on the table, seconded by Joe.
No, Andrea's seconded.
Okay, Andrea's seconded it. We have a motion on the table. I'd like to discuss it, but can't, but I put a suggestion on the table for consideration. I'm not going to discuss it, so we got a motion to second, let's do a roll call vote. And you've got to understand, the only way I vote is in case of a tie. So, let's go ahead with it.
Trey?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Elsie?
Absolutely no.
Andrea?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes to restrict the parking on Second Street, and it'd be posted in...
Washington.
Washington Street, yes, sir, West Washington. Okay, thank you all for that. We have a resignation tonight from the Grange Tourism Board, it comes from Nikki Green. I put the resignation letter in your all's packets, or someone did, Heather, or whoever, we all put the packs together, but she basically told me that she's committed for like the next four meetings, and certainly appreciated the idea of sitting on this commission, but evidently, her work is just too much for her to be involved, so I'd like for someone to make the motion to accept Nikki Green's resignation.
So, move. Seconded.
Made by Trey, seconded by Leslie Wright. I was in favor of the motion, let me know what you're saying, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Appointment that, I've talked to this particular lady, Taryn Winski, she pretty much says that she knows all of you, and each of you, and you would know her... much says that she knows all of you and each of you, and you would know her. I had her in, we, we talked for quite some time. She gave you a little, some form of a resume, bio on herself. I don't know who knows and who doesn't, but she's been a member of Main Street for many, many years, supposedly. Her husband served on downtown Main Street for fourteen years. She's active in the business, and plus she says she also does things for the company that she noted in her bio or resume. So would anybody like to make the motion to approve Taryn Winski to sit on the tourism board to finish out Nikki Green's term?
I'd like to do that.
A motion made by Elsie is a second, seconded by Andrea Essam Price. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this vote.
Okay. Mayor Lamline will recuse. Any further discussion? If not, Ozon, favor the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have one recusal. Thank you, Mayor Lamline. Okay, um, next item you had in your pockets was a contract for combined government surplus auction with Oldham County. I wanna say that Kevin Nuss with the judge's office, I think, approached, um.
Are you gonna do number seventeen?
I'm sorry. What's that?
Seventeen.
Okay, eighteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. I just did it.
Just did seventeen.
Taryn Winski just made a motion to approve her. Okay. Now we're on eighteen, sorry. Once again, I wanna forward this to you all, it comes from the Department of Local Government. It talks about the Consumer Price Index for the past year, and you all are certainly entitled to receive that index. You probably would have seen the same thing last year that you received this year, and it might add to a total of five percent, but you all last year just decided not to act on it at all, but I did wanna bring this to the council table for consideration, and it would give council members a two-point-three percent increase as well as the mayor, but does anyone wanna act on this tonight or just leave it alone? You all can make up as far as seventy-seven thousand dollars if you wanna raise it to that, as can the mayor, but that's dollars compared to nineteen forty-nine dollars, as if you had taken the Cost of Living Index since nineteen forty-nine, you could be making seventy-seven thousand. But would you like to discuss this at all or just let it die for discussion?
I don't wanna discuss it. Mayor, I'll put that out for myself.
Okay.
So anybody else want to?
Anyone else have any comments?
I'm not.
Would anybody like to discuss, if you're not gonna discuss this, would you like to discuss the increase in the council pay for the next election that you're gonna be voting on, taking as of January first of next year?
As long as we don't have to pay to be on here, I'm good with what it is now.
Anybody wanna discuss that?
What did you say, Elsie?
I said, does anyone wanna discuss an item in relation, well, that's not on the agenda, but if you.
I was asking Elsie what she had said.
I just said that as long as they don't try to make us pay to be on the city council, I'm very pleased with what.
Okay, okay.
I am, but that's just me.
Okay. So no further discussion on any of that, okay? Now we're moving on to nineteen. We have a contract before you, in your pocket. It's basically us joining in with Oldham County Government's gonna have a pretty large size auction at the county property in Buckner. We've got a number of items to sell, but I wanted the council to approve our contribution to Timberlake Auction Service, which he'll charge us ten percent of the gross amount on any products that he sells for the city of La Grange. That's a ten percent commission, so anyone like to approve that? We're hoping to have a pretty big turnout for the auction, and between Corey Rusnick and Chief Colette, they have submitted items for it to be considered surplus, so who would be willing to approve the contract for us to enter into with Timberlake Auction Service? Anyone?
I'll make a motion, approve it, Mayor.
Motion made by Joe Davenport is our second.
I second it.
Seconded by Elsie Carter. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Ozon, favor the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, everyone's for it. Cool. Okay, and then the items for surplus, you have those in your pocket. Chief Colette is trying to get rid of some vehicles, some confiscated vehicles, and hopefully we can do that at the auction. Some other items, Corey Rusnick has a lot of things here he's listed to, evidently he has no more use for and would like to get them surplus and sold, so anyone approve the surplus auction item list? Anyone make a motion to approve the items to be sold?
I'll make that.
Second.
Motion made by Andrea Essam Price, seconded by Trey Kammer. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, Ozon, favor the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, um, any committees like to say, report anything tonight at all? Or is everyone sort of worn out? Anyone like to bring anything up at this point?
Yeah, I quickly touched on a few things. So the Personnel Insurance Boards and Commissions Committee met on February twenty-sixth, and we had continued discussion of the La Grange City Hall Employee Handbook. We will meet again on March twenty-fifth at five o'clock at City Hall to continue discussions over the La Grange City Hall Employee Handbook.
What time?
Also, the Buildings, Budget, Finance, and Utilities Committee met on February twenty-sixth at six o'clock. We had presentations from the Chamber in Economic Development, Main Street, and La Grange Tourism Commission. They each gave great presentations of their visions and, um, as far as the funding goes, we did ask, or there was a request for some additional funding that we will consider from the Chamber, and that committee will also meet on, it'll meet next week, March eleventh, at City Hall at four-thirty.
Thank you, Trey. As he said, they've had three, three or so entities show up during their first budget meeting, and we had one planned for this Wednesday, but Trey's come up unavailable for that meeting, so we're gonna push it out a week, correct, Trey?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else like to comment on a committee you're serving with, Ron?
Yes, the rewriting the guidelines for historic district, we're still working on them. I figure, it looks like to me maybe we can get it done next week, hopefully.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, Mayor Lamline, within that Guidelines Committee Work Task Force, uh, will the committee's gonna consider maybe amending the appointments to the commission in terms of things that've come up in the last few weeks or anything about residency or anything like that?
I, I, you know, I think we need to talk about that. Again, that, that's not in the guidelines, that's an ordinance issue, which the city council would have to decide which, what they wanna do with that, but I, I think we do need to look at it because obviously we're, there's some, there's some issues on that commission, and I do think we need to look at it and talk about maybe making some changes.
Okay. All right. Well, as your committee works through that, maybe you'll, maybe be able to discuss some changes that can be amended into it.
We can do that. Thank you, John.
Okay. All right. Anyone else on a committee tonight? Anybody like to bring up any unfinished business that you'd like for the city to take up or consider?
Um, I had another question come to me from a constituent about the left arrow at one forty-six and fifty-three. It was on the agenda last time for new business, I was just wondering if there was any update.
There's not at this time, Andrea. I, I personally have had to wa, I've tried to watch that, that signal and myself, so I, I would be making sure I understand exactly what's taking place, but I understand you don't get a designated left-hand green, if that's what we're after regardless whether, but I haven't seen any traffic backing up. Are we seeing traffic actually back up?
I'm not sure it's about backing up. If you're heading westbound on, on, on Jefferson Street, okay? And if there's any vehicle that's, that's wanting on the opposite side going east, wanting to turn left, you can't see around that vehicle to know whether you should go or not. It's dangerous, and I'm telling you, somebody's gonna get hurt.
So the issue is, our issue or your constituents' issue is getting a left-hand dedicated green for so many seconds to give a first two or three cars the opportunity to get through, regardless what the traffic count is. Okay. Well, okay, if that's the issue, I'll press that to Matt Bullock in the morning, if, okay. Any more unfinished? Any new business?
Mayor, I got something I'd like to bring forth.
Okay.
The month of March is opportunity to personally thank and honor Vietnam War veterans and their families, uh, to thank and honor Vietnam War veterans and their families who so richly deserve recognition for their service and sacrifice during the war. Most of them wasn't thanked when they got back and returned from the conflict. I can one vouch for that. When I came back and was brought back to Travis Air Force Base, San Francisco, for discharge, we went through debriefing the next day, and we actually had no communication with outside world at all, far as, we were fortunate to get a letter from home. It wasn't like, you know, we didn't have internet and all they have now, so the first thing they told us, which all of us that was returning from Vietnam War just looked at each other, 'cause we hadn't had a clue, uh, the thing that they told us said, the one of y'all that just getting discharged today and are flying commercial flights back home, said, "We recommend you don't wear your uniform." Said, "You're not liked." They don't, the, they, they don't like you. So, anyway, this is, uh, this is like a welcome home, and, uh, in, uh, the president in twenty-seventeen signed into law the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act, establishing, you know, the Viet, the National Vietnam War Veterans Day, and that is observed every March the twenty-ninth. So this is, uh, this is a month to just say, "Welcome home, Vietnam veterans. Thank you for your service," and, uh, the ones that don't realize that there was over fifty-eight thousand Americans lost in the Vietnam War. So this, this, just to let everybody know that this, that the month of March is, is Vietnam Veterans Month, and March the twenty-ninth is a, is a day, so thank y'all.
Why, why, Joe, did, why did, uh, why did they, how, how come the soldier got told? Why was they weren't welcomed back home? Why was that?
They said that actually that, that they, that Americans was, they actually called it like a living room war or something and all the protests, and they said they just didn't like the, the Vietnam veterans. I, I don't know what we done wrong. I've never researched it, you know, uh, far as I'm concerned, fifty years ago, I made it back, so.
I think that.
So that, that was enough for me to not be one of the fifty-eight thousand and one to come home with, with all of my parts to, for better saying, so, you know, I was just glad to, glad to be back on American soil. So why, why we wasn't liked or, you know, I, 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 I don't know, I, I've never researched it. So, anyway, just let you know that this is a welcome home in the month of March, and this is actually out of the, uh, American Legion Magazine, and the American Legion is reaching out and making sure that, uh, that all of them gets honored, and the, actually the title of it is Welcome Home.
Mm-hmm.
Is what it is, so, uh, I just wanted to, uh, to make that public, so.
Appreciate, Joe, and appreciate you serving in Vietnam. There were two guys I remember standing on Main Street, talking to, Denny Hall was one of them, he got killed in Vietnam.
Yeah.
His mother worked at the drugstore here, and then Eddie Rankin, who was Dip, Dip Rankin's older brother, Eddie was killed in Vietnam. He and, he and they both were killed right about the same time, and I used to see him on Main Street here on La Grange, outside the drugstore.
Yeah, when you're in a, when you're in a smaller town like this, I know Greensburg, where I grew up, uh, three of my close friends didn't make it back, you know, so.
Okay, well, would, would try to remember that on March the twenty-ninth for sure and the week of?
Yeah, the month of March is actually, uh, the welcome home, and, uh, March the twenty-ninth is actually the day that the president declared it, uh, National Vietnam War Veterans Day, is March the twenty-ninth of every year.
Okay.
One more, one more thing, uh, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On the fourteenth, that's on a Saturday, at ten o'clock in the morning, we're having a, a open, uh, public, uh, comment and, and, and review of the Springs Park plans.
It's be held where? At the library?
Library.
Okay.
Ten, ten a.m.
Okay. Anyone else have any further announcements you'd like to make to the general public about anything? We'll tell the council tomorrow at three-thirty in a room across hallway is gonna be a Project Development Board meeting about the courthouse project, where it stands, how that's coming along, so if any of the council would like to come to that, it's open meeting, three-thirty tomorrow. You're welcome to listen.
Mayor, can I make a comment on that?
Yes, sir.
I've had several people over the last few weeks ask me if there's anything that the city, first they question why the city was tearing down the courthouse. I told them that that's not a city initiative. Is there anything, I guess the next question I was asked, is there anything that the city council or, or mayor could do to, um, change the mind of that committee? I don't know of anything that could happen at this point. Do you have a comment on that?
Uh, my only comment would be, I do know that the State Historical Preservation Group from Frankfurt, their group was in here like a week, week or so ago, at least, about a week or so, they viewed the courthouse, they went under it, on top of it, in the roofs, rafters of it, trying to determine what is original, how original is what you see today, things like that, and what interrelation they're gonna have with administrative office of the courts, if any. I don't know how that Frankfurt network will work once they appeared here, so I think that's something we could maybe hear tomorrow. And basically what that was, was intended to do was, could the design of the courthouse incorporate some of what we see standing there today? That's, that's all I can say about that.
Okay. What time was the meeting?
Three-thirty tomorrow.
Three-thirty tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
In a room across the hallway. Anyone have any happy, happy news? Any happy, anything? I wanna comment, Joe Davenport, health-wise, he's, he's concentrating on losing a few pounds, and he's doing it. He's just recently had his eyes made to be a fifteen-year-old set of eyes, and so he's seeing good, and he's, he's losing weight.
Trying to get the body to catch up with fifteen-year-olds.
And Mayor Lamline's doing good. We hope so.
Yep.
Mayor Lamline's been through a lot of stuff in the last six months or. Mayor Lamline's been through a lot of stuff in the last six months or year. So, we all pray for good health. We all pray for a kind city.
Right.
We all pray to be good people and, um... Pray for Debbie Pollard, she's recuperating from a tough knee replacement, so she can't be with us tonight. I did get a text from Mary Bolton just a little bit ago and said she has a severe migraine and was just not gonna be able to be here tonight. I especially wanna thank Heather and Stephanie, uh, over this auditing thing tonight. As I said previously, it's, it's a tremendous amount of understanding to get in these books, what these auditors want and expect. And we're gonna work on that. I don't think, um, I was gonna get a chance maybe to let Dr. Hazelton speak because you heard about what he said in reference to the golf course, how that golf course is operating and, uh, I think, uh, the Hazelton and the, Dr. Hazelton and the Board of Directors of the golf course, they do all they can to generate the revenue that they do. And it's tough these days and times to operate a golf course. So, um, I don't know what Dr. Hazelton felt, felt about the review and the remarks of that. So, anyway, uh, Mr. Craig Mall, you have anything to bring to the council of worthwhileness tonight?
Not that's worthwhile.
Mayor, these, uh, financial interest disclosure statements was in our packet. Do you want those, Stephanie?
Yes, please.
I'll give you mine now.
Keep passing out thank yous, Cory does a great job. Chief Colette, Stephanie Winter, Mary Ann Smith, uh, Mary Ann? Mary Ann's doing well, so glad to see her tonight. I don't know the young lady in the left-hand corner back there, I'm not sure who she is, but she's... Who? Ray's wife, okay, well, nice to have you here tonight, good to see you, good to see you. And, uh, otherwise, if no one else has anything, you got something, Andrea?
I have one little thing. Just kind of in regards of what Sandy said about looking at the positive side versus maybe the glass less empty. I did note that the auditor said that we had four findings last year and this year we have two, so I want to say good job to Stephanie and Heather and whoever else made that happen, that's great.
And that's what they're, they're grading everything on, okay, so...
But that went down, so that is goo...
Well, they, they, they work tremendously hard and, and like I say, I, what they've had to work with Kevin on to do these things at the year end, e, even into the next fiscal year to push him back in the previous fiscal year, has just been unbelievably tough and difficult and, but I think having done that this time, they're gonna do, understand it much more better this time next year. So that's the good news, okay?
Maybe, maybe we can replace him and save the money for him if, if we, uh, wave our magic wand and make CPAs out of all the people in the city hall.
Yeah. Yeah, right. Anyone else have anything? If not, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Leslie, seconded by who? Seconded by Andrea, thank you, Andrea, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye. Anyone opposed?